This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon, members of the board, and we have a number, and we have participants that are still joining us all. We're going to allow people to get connected, and I will start with a few comments.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, this is 3:00 PM on Thursday, June the 4th, 2023, on the Gateway High School.
Bill, I cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
All right. Good afternoon, all. This is Press and Castle Management. Before we get started, I believe everybody should be able to see a copy of the agenda for this afternoon's board meeting. That agenda does include the chatroom procedures during the very Q and A portions of this afternoon's meeting. I'm going to read these aloud, and anybody who cannot see the screen can hear them. So keep in mind, these will be applicable during the Q and A portions of today's meeting.
Sounds like Chris Sanders.
That was Chris.
I muted him.
Are we ready to continue?
That was Joe Scofield, his background noise, his audio.
Well, we have a forum. I recall the forum as soon as we have the place to the class, please join us. Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
United States of America, in due public, which stands, petition, and God, indecipherable, with the deep justice.
Thank you very much. If you have a phone or some other noise maker, if you would put it on mute. So we don't have any more disturbances that were likely to have anybody, it would be a help. I'm going to call the roll. Ms. Flaherty? I am here, Mr. Guy. Banks is not here.
He's here.
Feinberg is not here.
You need to record that we're there via video.
And Mr. Banks?
Chairman, what I was just that, for the record, the chair reflected that there are three members, four members present in person, yourself, Ms. Flaherty, Mr. Tinkell, Annette, Chairman Feinberg, Mr. Feinberg, that's present by phone, or Zoom, or meeting, whatever the virtual remote technology is. Is Mr. Banks, find him?
Yes, I'm here.
We have everyone here in person, or Mike goes. Also, for the record, our attorney, Mr. Parry, is here, and our manager, Mr. Schumacher, is here. Mr. Chairman, Mr. May, I'm sorry. For the record, and I'll provide this to the commander, is a copy of the affidavit of publication of the notice of this meeting. Why do we wait until the? Right from the beginning, so that this meeting was duly and properly noted, that the meeting itself was. And that the committee, the board, has to be set up in a proper way. So I'm trying to make sure it's all correct. Thank you. Mr. Gentry, manager, do we have any, any audience would like to speak to the board?
We do not have any cards. They have been filled in to address the board. We also don't have any chat requests. I see that Warren Davies is on, Jim Wazinski is on. I think Jim, Jim is more, wanted to speak at the public hearing for the assessment methodology. No, we don't have any chats or any forums filled out. I also would mention why we're trying to keep the crowd here to a minimum. We have the day with chairs, and we also have remote video and audio back there, so give additional folks to sit back there and put the cards out.
My screen is blank as far as members or anyone from the audience, is that the way it's put? Oh, here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Scofield is also there. Hearing that there is no one for public comment this time, I'd like to be to the staff reports and informational items at 3A. Mr. Returning, please. Yes, sir. First item 3A, Resolution 2000, 2020, that time, tollway zone. The resolution that taught us that we not include the task from A, which will be the exhibit of East Commerce Lake Strive, area currently owned by the district that was attached to the regional tollway zone resolution. And this resolution is needed as part of the transaction where the district will be deeding a portion of East Commerce Lake Strive east for a couple hundred feet to Lee County for Lee County to construct the roundabout. So motion is order, it's one of the items that's required because after the conveyance, this resolution won't be delivered until after, simultaneously with the deed. This resolution will be delivered simultaneous with the deed of what the property is deeded to Lee County, the district one of any jurisdiction control.
Are we going to vote on the resolution today or not?
Yes, I would, because the closing of the transaction, deeding the roundabout may take place within the next week or so.
Yeah, before making a motion to approve, just want to make sure, this goes completely to the eastern limit that we own, it's not a partial.
No, that's correct.
We're not, we don't have anything left.
That's correct.
We're deeding our whole piece that was left over to about the agenda. I didn't see a map in here, that's why.
The next item, which is the informational item, has the sketch, that's in the agenda on page 30. You may not have it.
I didn't see that, but I'll wait till another discussion, then I'll make a motion.
This will remove that entire section of the property owned on the tollway zone. And again, this will be delivered by the county at times. Now, the boundaries are what, exactly? Obviously, it starts from right away, okay, with Bullard, and it extends for a couple hundred feet east on a curve to a terminus, I'd say about 350 or 400 feet.
And then the remainder of that road will remain with that non-existent.
That's correct. Nothing, nothing to do with that, not existent, be all right.
We're talking about part near.
Philosophy.
Philosophy, yes, okay, good one, thank you.
That's my reference point, too, and I apologize, I shouldn't have said that.
Or to that one child, or no child left.
And this is the one that we've already unfortunately approved the roundabout with.
Through deeding the land for the roundabout.
Yes.
Are we ready for a motion, Mr. Senator?
I will make the motion to approve this resolution for the 2020-2020-9.
Thank you, Mr. Tinkell, for the second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. What, any other discussion?
No.
Excuse me?
I just said no, I'm good.
We heard this voice in the ether. Mr. District Manager, are you going to call a roll, or am I?
I'd be happy to call the vote, and we'll start with Supervisor Flaherty.
Yes.
Mr. Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Chair Feinberg?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkell?
Yes.
Mr. Kerry Sado?
Mr. Chairman, the next item is for informational items, these are the documents that will be associated with, we executed by the district, that are associated with deeding that same segment of Commerce Lake Strive to Lee County. And it's for informational items, board's already approved, they're all tried, but just up more than once, the documents, and oh. And the district will be getting an easement back, utility facilities, and anything else that it owns in that area. Because once the district invests its ownership, it has a number of improvements that need easement, so Lee County is giving an easement back.
What? You said something earlier that implies that something's going to happen within the next week, what is that explaining to happen?
The closing possibly of this transaction, maybe one of it. The district would execute it, deliver them to Lee County, so that Lee County.
At one time, back several months ago, when we got stuck with this, I thought that they were talking about going to try to start the construction. Have we heard anything about the construction itself? A lot of people asking that question.
I don't know if Chris or Danny knows, or something about the construction?
Danny might know a little more, the only thing I know is they're planning on opening the bid tomorrow. Danny?
Yes. For the record, Dana Nelson, and I know more than, I know more than what Chris just said.
So is that inclusive of our utility relocation?
Yes. Yeah, so they opened bids tomorrow, that's all we know, we'll hear from there.
And I think the best guess, the best guess on that is it'll probably be 45 days, and 360. Yep, they have board approval on track, and after that, it matters to proceed, so the construction starts about 45 to max to 60 days.
And as for information, only one other information item. And the governor yesterday signed another executive order as part of the basing coming out of the guide, coming out of the, I'll call it the sand down of COVID-19. Executive Order Number 20-139 is the phase two. And the part of that executive order, the part that's probably more pertinent for this board and other groups, is that is Executive Order 20-69, which allowed remote technology, communications media technology to be utilized, and suspended the physical form requirements, has been extended until June 30, 2020. So unless that executive order 20-69 is extended further, after June 30, 2020, it may not be possible to hold meetings where there's less than 300 physically present. So just keep you apprised of that. And also, part of that, under the responsible individual activity part of that executive order, it still mentioned that senior citizens and individuals with a significant underlying medical condition are strongly ordered to avoid crowds, so we don't have crowds, and take measures to limit the risk of exposure to COVID-19. And also, another responsible individual activity is all persons in Florida are encouraged to avoid congregating in groups larger than 50 persons. And that was part of the executive order, and that's also the one that allows bars to go to 50% capacity for other.
They just snide remark, though.
Too early. And movie theaters, so bowling alleys, all those.
Bowling alley.
Yes. That was just informational.
Is that it, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, any questions for the attorney? Thank you very much, Mr. District. Oh, Mr. Engineer, you're going to review the test of the task with authorization, which I get to read with a magnifying glass?
Yes, sir. Magnifying glass is ready. So I'm Tyler Wayne, right, I'm also with Tech Tech, and I'll go through your task authorizations here shortly with you. So just a quick update on each one of these, Task 1908, that is the inspection services for the Gateway High School. Nothing really to report there, other than it's ongoing. Most of the utilities that are going to be relocated or installed, that are going to be gateways, have been done. They do have some work left to do, but nothing really major to report there. 1913, that is designed for the next year of Lake Banks, that's the 2021 Lake Banks. We are progressing with design, and we have a set of plans that we hope to submit to Gateway this month. We have been talking with Gateway staff about doing some different littoral work and stuff like that for the next years of lakes, so that's in design. The plan would be to have that for DEP approval in the month of August, so we could have funding for next year to complete. Task 2001, that is the roundabout utility relocation, that's for the first roundabout, Commerce Lakes Roundabout. As Danny said, they're opening bids on that one tomorrow, so really nothing left to do on that task authorization for us. 2003 and 2004 are both for the construction management and inspection services for this year's round of Lake Banks. So a quick recap where we are on that. 83, 90, sorry, 83, 91. 101 and 103 are all substantially complete, 103 is nearly substantially complete. There's a punch list work to do still on 101, and then 103 after, it should be wrapped up this week or next week. We did have some discussion with the contractor about holding off for the remaining three lakes that are left that will bid this year, just because of where we're at with the rainy season right now. We all kind of felt that it was in everyone's best interest to pause that until the next dry season, so we are in discussions with the contractor about how that's going to get worked out, I suppose, contractually, and how we're going to hold those prices, so they can come back and complete that work after rainy season is over. But other than that, nothing to report on those two task authorizations. 20-06, flowway weir adjustments, that one is in the design phase. Looks like we have scheduled to submit design plans to Gateway at the end of June. After that, we're going to be getting permit with South Florida. 2007, that's the CEI, so the construction engineering inspector inspections on the Commerce Lakes Roundabout. When construction begins, we'll perform inspection activities on that one. And 2008 is the engineer's report for the assessment methodology. The report is done, unless we need to make any changes pending outcome of this public hearing, so other than that, that one should be complete.
Thank you, Tyler. Are there questions for the attorney?
Yeah, a couple of them. On the 2006, the flowway weir adjustments, has that pre-permitting meeting with South Florida been held yet?
Um, we haven't done it in person because of the whole situation, but we've had phone calls and Skype and Teams meetings with them to discuss the permitting questions that we have, so yeah, we've had those.
Is the design for weers two and three along the line of the format of the ones that are four and five, or are they different?
Pretty much the same, it's going to be an operable, I'm not sure if it's an operator, they're operable, yeah. So it's pretty much going to be a replacement of those existing weers with operable gates.
What about the width, especially on two?
I think one of them is changing. Is it two? Two as the one, the last one out, yes, I think that one width-wise is changing.
Okay, increasing.
Stephen's doing this design, not me, so I don't want to misspeak, but I'm pretty sure that that one is changing from either 20 to 25, or 25 to 21, or the other.
Well, it's 25 now, and the other one is 20, and was supposed to be 20, and it's 15 or something like that, so it was still wrong, but.
You're kind of got feet above ceiling, huh?
No, width.
Of width.
First one was.
Narrow, isn't it? They're too narrow now.
Too narrow now. We're going along, we haven't heard anything from state that would be to the contrary to go on ahead and proceed to a construction.
No, I mean, they just told us, you know, to make a permit, we'll review it, and they didn't give us any pushback on the concept. I mean, in general, they're fine with the concept of installing operable weers, they just told us, you can't use them unless we give you permission.
And I guess this was for you, and you, and/or Chris. We done anything more relevant to talking to the highway department, county, and all the parties about interstate crossing?
I haven't had that done, no.
We totally on something on that.
I can let Brian address that, I had a conversation with him, and he'd like to report what the answer was.
Well, you guys are coming up next, that's. What were the three cons that you're asking to defer on phase two?
123. What's the number?
Is it the one at the? Mando, or Bobby Isles?
59, 9312. That's the one in Stony Brook. Yeah, Stony Brook, Timber Ridge, and the other one, Gateway Greens.
Feinberg, any question for the attorney?
I do. Tyler, on the three lakes that you're deferring till the fall, one of the, I've been asking this about all three of them, but the one in Stony Brook is the one that I'm the most aware of. It had already been staked, so those stakes are out there in those people's backyards. Has there been any consideration of taking those stakes back out? And are. And have, I don't know if it's true on all three of them, if they all three have been staked or not. And also, have we let the associations know, because there, an e-blast had gone out saying that work was going to begin. I'd hoped that we'd send a e-blast out to them, letting them know that work is being deferred till the fall.
Um, well, with regards to the stakes, yeah, we'll have them pull all those. I don't know if they staked the other two, I think they just staked the one in Stony Brook, but I'll check with them to be sure. As far as the e-blast goes, I'm not sure who gave us that, but yeah, somebody should send them an email and and just let them know, you know, the situation, that we're planning on holding off until dry season again.
Yeah, we'll make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Banks, any questions for the attorney?
None for me, thank you.
I guess we'll go ahead and go to the district manager.
I just have a couple things, and I'll turn it over to Kenny in the house, or to Brian, that's been real busy with a lot of stormwater conveyance work and utility work. On Monday, our new business manager, Laura LeRoy, will start work accomplished. Looking forward to having her on board, I sent all the board members a copy of her resume, and also a job advertisement that went out. And she has been working for several years at Altus, and she's very good with Gateway. Also, we've been working diligently on getting information out to all the HOAs and property managers on the assessment methodology, including all the engineering reports and related information and presentations. And I also got a quote to place decorative signage in place of the county signage at the new roundabout at the high school, and it's approximately $20,000. And it was interesting that the contractors did to install the county sign for $2,500. So even Jeff, the engineers at Johnson, they were doing that, were a little suspect of that bid price for that signage, but they're holding them to it. And I'll bring back a formal request, that that one may be where we want to let them leave the county signs in for a little bit till they not get out.
Me, it was manipulative.
Something. But anyway, that would be a cost for, it's approximately 20 different signs that are going up in that the roundabout. And it looks awful thin when you drive by.
It's going from the polluted look that we have, the decorative look, to the Lee County base.
Yep, Lee County Steel Pole.
Looks like.
And Kenny, you want to address some of the significant utility projects coming up, and that are underway?
Good afternoon, Kenny, Halden, utility manager.
I can hear you.
Everybody hear me okay? I wanted to go over the sandstone irrigation wells, all five of them now have been replaced with a uniform motor, which is a 24, 25 horsepower run coast. We had the well two offline for about three weeks while they did some rehabbing of that well. All the PVC casing is in place, new, with a new 25 horsepower pump. So all five of our wells now have uniformity with one pump. The irrigation pump, our jockey pump, was, has been online now for about six years. This last month, it actually took, it took a dive on us, and we had to get it offline to have it rebuilt. We got almost six years of service, continuous service out of that, out of that motor. Inner bearing went bad, but we only had, we had a six-day turnaround, which is really, really good. And we did this in April, which is our highest month for demand on irrigation. So all of the stuff that we've done over the last five years now, pretty much performed flawlessly with all of the demand. We had record demand this year, we beat every record we had for almost every month. And it was able to handle it without any, any problems, even though we had our jockey pump go offline, we were able to manage with no interruption to any of our customers for that, so it worked out really, really well with what we've done with that. The Gateway Greens valve replacement is on the agenda for approval. I'd just like to cover that then. Our staff is going back to normal scheduling. We've brought everybody back online, and we're all, we've gone back to community sweep, so we are going into each individual community and returning to our, our normal utility routine. Hammock Cove, in May, we had a contractor decide to have a shutdown on it. Whenever they, we had a simple problem with a meter box that got ripped out of the ground, and they pulled both water lines, one-inch water lines out, and started flooding the area, so instead of prepping the lines, they decided to shut the water main down, and shut off everybody's water. We got on scene, and when you do that, we're required to do a boil water notice, and we have to follow all kinds of Department of Health standards to get, to remove the boil water notice. So we went through the whole process, and it happened, I believe, on a Wednesday, and we didn't get the all clear on Health Department until Monday. So for five days, there was a segment of Hammock Cove was under a boil water notice because the contractor took it upon himself to shut the water main down. When you have a boil water notice, we're required by the Health Department to pull three samples and get them all approved, pass all the tests, and then we're required to do a second one. So when I went to pull the samples, I pulled into Westlens, which is, or West Haven, which is a new community that they're building. I pull up, and I find two more illegal connections from the north. So in a period of about two hours, we had cited two different contractors, over $2,000 in violations. Hammock Cove was a boil water notice, and West Haven with two illegal connections into our water main. And we'll assess each one $500. The total bill for the Hammock Cove shutdown was $1,200, and I believe $72 total. And then the two illegal connections at West Haven were $500 apiece. And we told them this is the last time, next time, we'll just cite, we'll cite, the sheriff will be called and brought out and cite, and cite them on scene for illegal, for two illegal connections. And that was, any questions on that? I will go over the Gateway Greens valve replacement.
On that note, too, I've had these kind of continuing to pass. Aren't there statute with theft of utility services? We have the ability to go into county court and recover an amount, a multiplier of the amount of water that's gone through them, or $3,000, whichever it's worth. Plus, it's a crime.
What have they done?
It's a criminal offense to tamper with or the utility.
What have they done with that?
How do they connect?
Yeah, what did they do illegal, I didn't understand.
They, they're, where there's the box, where the box is supposed to be, where the lines come out of the water main, they're, they're attaching, they're attaching in illegal times, they're bypassing, they're checking.
Bypass.
And they're going right into the line, and then tying it in, and then opening up the curbs stop, and then they're.
Is this to an individual home, or to the system?
To the system.
To the system?
Yeah, well, it's tapped into the main. It would be, it would be where we hook our meters up. They're tapping into that with a PVC pipe, tying it on with string, one of them, I had a PVC screw on. And they're bypassing the backflow, which makes it very dangerous if they have anything, like, you'll find, usually it's the people doing the mortar that are laying the bricks, and they need water to mix their mortar, and they'll put it all into a 50-gallon drum, and they'll bypass the backflow. So should the pressure drop, you'll create a site, and then it will go right into your waters.
Which also, I suggest also, maybe next time, is the chair would file a complaint with the contract, the board, to the contractor. I mean, just a multiple approach to convince them underneath to not do that. Ms. Flaherty, did you have a question?
No, no.
Are you?
I have one. Kenny, the money that is, that's $1,200 and $1,000, is that being passed through to these developments, or these developers?
Yes. Yeah, well, we cite.
Yeah, well, we cite, we cite Lennar and Lennar cites, gives, passes the, uh, the fines off on their subcontractors to do it. And it goes into a.
Spilled per property.
Yeah. So Lennar, Lennar and Pulte were both assessed the fines.
Okay, thank you.
Or charge.
The charge.
Thank you. That's for the record, the charge.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Firebird, are you?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Banks, any questions for Kenny?
I do not, thank you.
I just wanted to congratulate you on being able to get all of this done without the seriously inconvenience in our.
And Brian, I'll call you up to address Public Works. There were a couple parks and recs I don't want on there.
Oh, good afternoon. Brian Breschier, Public Works Manager. Dog parks open back up. Everybody, normal hours. Cool. We're back nine to four Tuesday through Saturday. I lucked out. We hired a gentleman from Sunsplash, during this coronavirus, who was furloughed. Very knowledgeable, so we kind of stole him, which is perfect timing. Who knows, still haven't kicked coral, but Tim's up there now. He's been here about three weeks, working out well. Uh, we've only got one other part timer here right now because hours are not long enough. About 45 hours as those hours get extended, we'll be calling people back. So that's whatever county decides. Right, Tuesday through Saturday, nine to four for exercise only, is what we've been stated. So we're just following the Lee County guidelines. Unless you guys seem dangerous.
Yeah, I have that, yes. I know that in some places there are some chairs put out for the pool because restaurants are open and they have to keep 50% passed inside. This is outside. And they were wondering if there could be a few chairs put out because even if they're exercising, they would like to be able to sit there for a few minutes afterwards to dry off. Okay, and we did say that you are going to extend these hours.
It all depends on Lee County. Lee County extends the hours, we extend the hours. We kind of follow the guidelines down here with the dog park along with the soccer fields itself.
And you're not open on Sunday?
It tells me Tuesday through Saturday right now. Is what the county's got.
Okay. Is there any way to contact the county to find out when they're going to receive? So that I can answer these residents with some kind of schedule? That's really what I want to know. If like in three weeks, this is going to happen or four weeks or it, it would be a, just some kind of time schedule so that I could give them some answers.
Okay. We normally, they normally contact us about a couple of days before they extend the hours.
All right. I would appreciate it.
We can reach out and find out if they've heard anything from the governor.
I'm, I'm being asked the same thing that Captain brought up. He was asking whether we're going to have the crew going back to normal hours.
Mr. Firebird, question?
None.
Banks?
No, none for me, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Well, public works side here. 2020 conveyance cleanup and repair. Like I say, I-75 was completed on April 7th. That was a west side. If you've not been down here, if you wish to see it, glad to show to you. We dredged that back out. Roughly, it's back to the original depth. We put armor and rip rap on one whole side of that. So now we have our outfalls clean all the way out to the slope. We recently did the east side, the 75, that was completed May 18th. Luckily, we didn't have to dredge anything out, but we had a lot of vegetation where it grew up over top of it. So we cleared all that back. So the water will flow now underneath I-75. Mr. Tinkles' response to reaching out for F dot, I did reach out to F dot, talked to the gentleman who's in charge of all the water for this area out of Barto. Basically told me, that's what you get. I explained to him the additional 1,500 acres with Timber Creek coming online.
He said that's what you get?
He said they've looked into it. He goes, you know, I, that's well, just like you wear it. He goes, I appreciate it. He goes, but they feel like that's substantial to hold. So we're going to do our dangus, get all the water to them and it'll be on them if it doesn't go under I-75. I mean, I can only do what I can do and it's going beyond F dot if it doesn't go over under. If it goes over top of it, then it'll be on them.
Over the top of I-75.
I mean, you got all this stuff cramming through.
Your house will be under 1800 before that happens.
We, we reached out and I'll be gladly give you the guy's contact and I'm talking to him. He's out of Barto.
He's signed for another letter writing campaign.
The conveyance behind the Wind Dixie was completed May 15th. What we did is put large stone down the middle of that conveyance and clear all the trees and wetlands out of it that was overgrown. I don't think it was done the last 13 years, as I was told. So that is.
I think it's a multiple of 13.
No, no, we did it the 11th.
So that has been cleaned out. The east side behind the Goodwill, this trees have been cleaned out. Matt Tower probably starting it next week since they wrapped the last lake up. You go in there and put stone in that one. That's only about 300 feet. It's not as much as the other side. The other side, we had about 800 to 900 feet of stone to put. Uh, funding for that was coming out of the bathymetric study. Mr. Bob here kind of helped me out. We reached out to hopefully get some of that funding back from that 2003 bond fund. So I'm hoping there's money. They're looking into it. If we can get money back to fund what we did for the conveyances behind up in Goodwill.
All 200,000 came out of the bathymetric fund?
72,000 did and another 27 came out of a different fund. But if I can get that 100,000 back, that'll go back into Gateway to continue to do more stormwater issues that we have up and down. Gateway Boulevard, we're out there all day today. If you haven't saw us with the back on truck because we got some areas that flooded last night. So we're just starting to clean up and down that because the lakes are winding down. So now we're really hit hard up and down Gateway, Griffin, these other areas.
Yeah, and I just got an email. The difficulty of that is the funds from the original phase, old phase, I call it, Pelican Reserve Funds City Centers used for capitalization improvements in that area. So I need to look at it.
Ultimately, is Pelican's northern outfall. So that is their outfall coming out.
It's not maintenance, capital expense. That's the key.
Want to make sure you understand this, this is 104 on 75 east and west and about 100 on the other.
Correct, behind the Wind Dixie.
Yeah, yeah. Again, where do the funds come from to cover that?
We pulled half of it out of the bathymetrics with about 140,000. You get the 101 on 75 come out of the bathymetrics, the 27.3 behind the Goodwill and the other 72, we pulled it out of Armwater.
Okay. All, all of this is out of the 001?
Yes, sir.
Is that right, Bob? All of them out of 001? Well, that's what they, we think that the bond bunch should fix for what they did behind Wind Dixie because it shouldn't have to give up. I would take exception to that repair. That should have been done correctly to begin with. If they didn't, now we fix it.
If we can, to be ideal, we can put it back in the 001 fund to figure, I got a few more conveyances left to finish, which we probably won't get it this year due to the water coming up, but we got other stuff we can get done.
Okay, I'll go with the engineers. Engineer group. It does qualify for capital, if it does, because the engineers ultimately have to make the certification to the trustee.
I know that this, uh, this is getting into the 2021 budget, but it's pertinent to this. Do we still have in our 2021 projected 001 and 002 budgets, money to do the flowway either two or three, like we were talking about?
No.
It's not in there now?
No, because to do flowway, three, we're doing, correct, three, which is three lakes. I'm getting quotes for that. And we found the original basic plan and profile when it was built.
But one time you talked about starting at the bottom and going up.
Correct. Well, the first three lakes, if you go from 75 all the way back to Weir 2.
Yes.
I've looked down, they're looking in good shape. I really don't think we needed to do those three.
I don't know, three, I don't know what. You're talking between tree line.
Talking every, there's basically you have just different lakes, part of the major conveyance from Hidden Creek all the way to I-75. But one behind Colonial, which is from tree line to 75.
Okay.
Which that looks well. It's very, it looks deep. You can't see any sandbars.
And that's theirs to maintain anyway.
Correct. And once you get inside of Pelican, there's two lakes before you hit the second weir.
I knew there was one, I didn't realize.
We don't refer to it as one. We just call it the flowway.
The flowway.
We call it the flowway.
Okay, well, there's a total of six lakes in that flowway. So first three coming east to west, looking in good shape. I really don't have to think we do anything. But when we get up closer from the last weir coming back this direction, you have a sandbar down the middle of a couple of those lakes.
Three east.
Correct.
Okay.
Obviously Marina and Casella is where the problems are.
Correct.
And we talked about it many times before we accepted that flowway of the developer.
Do we remember? Do? What, what is the, did you find the plans as to what the elevation, that trapezoid section was supposed to be?
We found them this week.
And what is it versus what it is today?
Well, I got Chris Matt Tower gave me a quote. I found the original plan. It's actually Austin dug them up, so the plan and profile and the original depths.
What do they show as the depth of the original plans? Let's just say immediately east of 100 foot.
I would have to pull prints up.
I was just wondering, are we talking about one foot of fill, two feet of fill that has to be dredged or?
I think you have a sandbar down the middle and I think what happened is when they built buildings, they cleared back and cleared back. Might be better there, but down the middle, you're probably talking three or four feet, I would have guessed, just by looking at it from there.
You weren't here, so it was something like that. What they did is one engineer did a set to that dimension, another engineer did a set from a dimension and the two didn't meet in the pit.
Yeah.
That's what happened.
I can see that by looking at it. The water's so low in the last few weeks, you get pretty much.
So you're, you're going to get with, that's our, to get a price after we have, who's engineering to determine what the quantities are? The cubicles who we're having to remove.
He's going to send his own people out there to do studies on it. Because what I'm going to do is give you the original, here's what went in. Now we need to get out there in a boat and do some studies on the final.
Somebody's going to physically shoot it.
Correct.
So that we know what we got.
So we know how much fill we got coming out of it. And the next question is removal of the fill that comes out of there. We were discussing putting it up there where the pool's at because if you ever plan on putting additional resources for tennis courts or all that, you'll have the fill there.
Where the pool's at.
Yeah, a 15 acre.
I was trying to figure out what pool he's talking about.
Our gateway pool. You got 15 acre property.
Our gateway pool.
Correct.
I, I know that the country club could use that fill material also.
My hall offsite costs twice as much. We're just trying to figure out ways to do it.
Yes.
Mr. Firebird, any questions?
I do not.
Mr. Banks?
Uh, no, sir. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Questions? I do have a question. Okay. It says, looking forward, number two. I thought there was supposed to be a workshop. You have it done as a public hearing. Is it a workshop that we're supposed to have? And Mrs. Walsh is here, so.
Yeah.
Oh, we, we were scheduled to hold, we had a workshop on it, but the next event I thought was going to be a public hearing to have a public forum to discuss the pond standards.
I thought the poll standard, that workshop was one of the things that was postponed.
We never had it.
We never had it, right? Yes. So we need to have.
We got a draft of the document and we were going to have it and then we ran into this and this.
Right, so.
It just depends on the, on the format. You want, Tony, you want to maybe, we're going to talk about the new pond standards. It would be either you got a workshop or actually a public hearing that discusses all those aspects of the pond standards.
I mean, I think it might be more for government, which has more policy issues, have the workshop first fleshed out. Recognizing the board can't make decisions at that time, but it might, it might be a lot of input that they want taken into consideration. And as opposed to trying to do all kind of edits on the line during the public hearing.
I'm concerned, I've read all the documents and I'm, I'm ready to go to a public meeting. I just don't know about the rest of it. If you've read it, it needs to be digested before we go any further.
I, I've read it and I'm, but I think that if, we owe it to the committee to go ahead and hold the workshop that we had to postpone because of the COVID. And that's what I was, I just asked what the meeting dates were in July. We normally have a workshop on the second meeting. And Chris, do we have any workshops scheduled for July 16th at this time?
No, we don't. I was going to suggest that we schedule that workshop for July 16th.
Only trouble with that is that throws down, I'm a meeting in August, this thing's going to be out later. If we can accelerate it somehow.
We could go, probably as quick as we could be ready, it would be the first meeting in July. I think it's the second.
Mike, I was going to double check with you.
On the street, for my best word, I thought that everybody thought it was going to be a workshop or a hearing, one or the other on our first meeting in July. That's what's on the street. I don't know if that's factual. I don't have a problem with that.
Where that information would have come from, but I'm not, I guess the, the question that I have is since we normally have a workshop on the second meeting, the, the July 16th for the workshop seems like the reasonable time to do it.
Well, go ahead. How about the second meeting in June?
I think we're doing, we're doing budget.
The budget's next week.
Yeah, but it's the 11th. We could, we could do it on the 18th.
Yeah, we do it on the 18th.
I guess we'd need to ask the committee if they'd be ready to present.
Well, Flavia is nodding her head and I think they were ready to present when we went into hiatus. So I think they're ready to go.
Okay, if they're ready to go, we can schedule the workshop for June 18th.
That would work.
Excuse me, this, this is Jim. Can I, with Newske, can I just say something? On the committee, we were, the belief of the committee is that it was July 2nd. Yeah, because I know Flavia was not available in June. And we didn't want it to, you know, wait all the way till the middle of July, but that's what we understood, just to put that out there.
So Jim, are you saying that you don't think that you'll be able to do it on June 18th?
Uh, no, I mean, Flavia said she's not available on June 18th. I think she was coordinating with Chris. And so our understanding was July 2nd was the date that was going to be the workshop. But maybe we're mistaken. That, that's, that's what I, as Ed said, on the street, that's what we figured it was going to be.
Not if you did, I mean, however, knowing that in August, you have everything done, means that I have to cancel whatever else I have. Judy, would you be here too? So then I guess waiting would be fine for the workshop on the second.
Did you hear that, Jim?
Uh, no, I did not.
Flavia indicated that because of the schedule, she felt that she could change her schedule such that June 18th could be, could be done.
Okay, I, I haven't talked to her in a, in a couple of weeks.
She said, she sat here in the room. I think the issue is, is that do you have a problem? Judy and her have no problem. Do, I guess the issue is, do you, you're the co-chair, I believe, do you have a problem?
Uh, I'd have to look because I, I didn't even look at June at that date because Flavia told me she wasn't available. But I'll, I'll get there one way or another. Don't worry.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm not set, thank you.
Mr. Firebird, is that good for you?
I'm, are we doing the June 18th or are we doing the July 2nd?
June 18th.
Sounds good.
Uh, Mr. Manager, I'm looking forward, item number one. The adoption of this district budget, I think should be for fiscal year 2024.
Yes, it's a typo. Sorry, that's my, my mistake.
Motion to approve. That's safer there.
And, and then that meeting has been noticed and advertised with the correct date, correct reference.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Just double checking.
They have a clarification to approve the budget for purposes of setting the public hearing to adoption.
We're now in the action agenda. We have a couple Pelican items. First is a narration project that they're working on. And Bob, did you say you had a clarification on that?
Yeah, Bob, Department of Pelican Reserve, the background information is destroyed. It's some other project. We are, we are upgrading three, nine of our ponds. And these are ponds in which Lennar was required by the permit criteria manual to install aeration, as they did of a fashion. But it was nowhere near to the standards that we would like, have to adhere to at all of our other ponds. And that is no diffuser greater than 100 foot apart. And that every pond does a turnover, a complete turnover of the water every 24 hours. So in the 35,000 that's in front of you, but this proposal is for us to take the ones that Lennar did initially, and to upgrade them to our current standard. That'll be more compressors.
Ms. Fineberg?
I said motion to approve.
Oh, I'm going to hear that. Second, I have a question before we vote. Um, on page, agenda page 44, the last page of your report on this, it says, Pond One, we're going to have four under a floating.
That is correct. Okay, uh, separate from what I just spoke about, we have another aeration initiative, which is being paid for by the pond fund. This covered Pond One, which is in Cologne. Pond 13, which is in Pelican as a driving. These two ponds, we bypassed the meeting to get to the meat of the community. But now we're at a point where everything else is being done. These ponds are still our responsibility. They're in Gateway. We maintain them. So now, since there are remaining bond fund funds, bond funds to pay for this, we're now approaching them. Part of doing this is providing electrical service to the pond. And I believe that's what you're referring to right here.
So Pond One is at the west end of the.
Right, the entrance of Cologne.
It says a discharge of three decks.
It's our, yeah, it's our last.
Our last pond before it crosses over.
Correct.
Into the system.
Into the slip, yeah.
And then the other one is the top of the drive.
The drive, which is our largest.
Okay, we have a motion and question. Flavia, do you have any other questions?
Yeah.
Ms. Fineberg, do you have any other question? Ms. Fineberg, do you have any other questions?
Aye. No, I do not.
Mr. Banks, do you have any other question?
I thought you were calling the phone.
Yeah, it just works out.
You're fading in and out.
Not for me.
All favor say aye.
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 We'll leave Mr. Gipper here, because the next item is also an expenditure for another segment of their rear yard drainage initiative that's open in Southern. There's an extensive list of lakes on here with a total price of $500,000, $100,000. And those are.
Yeah, those are.
Considered a separate.
Considered a separate problem.
Way to feedback some. But anyway, the background on this is the continuation of our downspout initiative. When we concluded Carina, which should be done this week or next, then we move into the portions of our community, Matarita, Prostco, and Pastoya, in which we now have overlap of the permit criteria manual upgrades, where Lennar is responsible to do some of them and not do other ones. So we're in a transitory period. This is a worst case cost for Matarita. And that's why we wanted to make sure the worst case cost was up. We won't spend more money than we have. But we really don't expect to have to spend this much money. Some of the homes in the Matarita and on this, one of 18 lakes, are already downspouted, but none of them have the center home downspout. So we're going to be doing that on all of it. Some of the homes have nothing. That's, we've got to do that to the state than we did everything else in the community. I'm still kind of unsure of which homes fall under which part of the permit criteria manual. And we're working with Tepra Tech to get clarification on that, because it looks like it just comes right down the middle of the street. In some homes, Lennar had to do it, other homes were going to do it. So we're almost at an address by address type of situation. So as soon as we get the clarification of them, then we can refine these.
But are all of these, 500 and some thousand, included in the 2020 stormwater budget of CO2?
Well, yes, the short answer is yes. We have been planning on doing all of these for about five years now. So we've had a running accumulating balance, a positive balance, that at one point was up to 101,300,000 dollars. We have been draining that down over these last couple of years, because we're certainly spending more than the budgeted amount of 100,000 a year. As we entered the 19, 2019, 2020 budget, we had a kitty, if you will, of $350,000, $370,000. So this will probably start biting into that.
Do you put this stuff out for bid by groups of homes?
Yeah, well, we started. It's an interesting story. We started early. Remember, it's a five year project. We had four contractors lay down their shovels and walk off, and wouldn't even do it. It was just way too different. The only contractor that has stayed with us has been Copeland Southern Enterprises. But I, I got a whole list of people that tried aquagenics, extreme divers, shannon.
Shoreline level?
No, this wasn't shoreline. This was just, this is a labor intensive job. It's a, you're between people's homes, and you got to dig it all by hand. And this good old boy and his sons, they do it.
I'll make motion to approve such a discussion.
I've got a question. I'm sorry. This is the, you have, I think, mentioned it is the continuation of what you've been doing.
Yes.
So that you will have the consistency of everything.
Yes, absolutely.
Correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
All of all Pelican is completed, except for maybe five homes in the sense that have been built since we did it and left. Now we're moving forward to finish up the remaining communities with this.
So there will be a continuity?
And there's going to be, you know, there, I could talk about this, because there's some issues with all of these communities only having three inch lines, and we wanted five inch double wall. But, you know, we're going to stay with it. We're not going to rip it up. When it fails, we'll replace it with a double wall.
Thank you.
Ms. Fineberg, any question?
It's muted.
Mr. Banks, you have a question?
I do not.
I just have one. And that is, Lennar has been difficult to deal with some of this business, have they not?
Uh, they haven't been hit with this one yet. Now.
You haven't told them that you're going to hit.
No, I, I, I verbally told them. But here's what happened. We are still battling Lennar up to today, to, I think we have six ponds where they should have conduited in electrical power to the bank, pond bank. And they didn't. Their contract around extension hordes to homes. So when we caught them on that, then they went back to their contractor who's since out of business. So right now, we have got a, a proposal from Southern States who does all the electrical work in Pelican. And that proposal is going to Lennar to fix these deficiencies of these six ponds electrically. And I'm not quite sure what that bid is going to be. But what we told Lennar is, go out and get your own bid. And they're going to, we're going to reconcile the two bids and see how close it is, because we prefer Southern, since we know, and they've done good work. So if the money's awash, we'll just go to Southern. If it's even close, we want to go to Southern. Because Southern has worked with our installer, who is Solitude, all along. Lennar keeps delaying by saying they want more bids coming in. But as of last Friday, I'm working with a guy named Aaron Milosevic. At least he's been receptive, and I believe we're making progress. It's in front of Russ Smith, but we don't have the approval yet. The check's not in mail. But I'm optimistic. I'm always optimistic. We're going to get.
I have a motion on this. I do have a second.
I'll second it.
And I have a second. Any other questions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the second, the second shoot of all bill that you asked about is, if we get feedback from Lennar, that they're not going to honor their requirements in the permit criteria manual to, to bring all the homes that they built in compliance with the permit manual at the time they built them, then I'll be calling my friend, Mr. Tony. We got a whole bunch of those.
Bring that back, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, we got a whole bunch of homes, because we hired an engineer to go out and survey. They did your home, but they didn't do Kathy's, and she's right next door. And then they did Chris's, but then they didn't do mine. So it's hit and miss when they did it.
If I could also, Bob, if you could, send me any of the plans, projects, where you propose that all is put in form, so I can be comfortable that's necessary. We've gone through this exercise previously, but I have not.
Okay.
Yet done it for this.
No problem.
Bob, please. Please don't leave.
I'm here.
I have a question.
I think we've heard this up. Where are we right now on Pond 38, knowing that the high tide's coming? Have we heard anything back from Johnson or anyone, Chris, this, you too? Have we heard anything back as to what Bridgestone, or Bridgetown, or Bridgestone's called?
Bridgetown.
Bridgetown. Have we heard anything as to what they're doing to limit the flow that's coming to 38? So we talked about building in a dam and doing all kinds of other things. What is our plan in the event they do that? Do we have a plan?
Yes, the ponds work group has engaged with the company to build the sandbag, the one building that is in danger.
So we're going to sandbag.
We're going to sandbag. We're looking for a more permanent thing. We're going to build a moat, if you will, around the building.
That is. Mr. District Manager, would you please continue? Or she, I believe we are.
And that's an amendment to our existing contract with aquagenics. And we were looking at our water quality sampling in the stormwater system, specifically at the Weers. And they do sampling also, and on a yearly basis. But in their contract, it's 25,144. We solicited a bid from Sanders that was 16,260 per year, which included the lab fee and their staff pulling the sample. And it's advantageous to us from that standpoint, also when you send someone out to the, the flowway on the other side of I-75, due to safety concerns, it becomes a two person job, meaning we would be sending two staffers out there to do it. So we're saving approximately $8,000 a year on the sampling fee and also on staff time.
They have a motion to approve?
Discussion.
What, what do I, did you make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
One second. Bob, did you have a question there? Are we?
It may be inappropriate, but in Pelican, we sample every month for free with Ernesto, Dr. Ernesto de la Vega.
Yes, sir.
A work group member takes the samples from wherever we've developed rivers.
Right.
And we get, is there something over and above that?
Well, no, it's basically the same thing, but we are in a neighborhood association where the community development district doing it. So if a pond group, like yourself, or.
We're not supposed to be doing it.
Yeah, or somebody like that.
Somebody on our staff couldn't do it for free. I mean, that's a lot of money.
Well, we're paying, we're paying aquagenics. Also, you're taking it over to Buckingham and having them analyze it.
Yeah, that's where we.
Taking to a certified laboratory and also having their sampler take it. So we didn't want to, we didn't want to operate under the guise that we're a pond, a neighbor or somebody living on a pond.
$1355,000 buys a lot of things. Okay.
Are you going, are you going to make any adjustments to your recommendation?
No, sir. It's, we just don't want to operate under that. We're the CDB, and we're doing the sampling. Want to do it with the laboratory, not taking it through Mr. Vega through a neighborhood program that's really meant for folks living on ponds that are interested in their water quality.
It's Lee County pond, it's accounting eight.
It is.
This is, this is already being done by aquagenics, right?
Right.
So we're just taking another person doing this in place of aquagenics. So that's reducing the price.
Correct.
Of what aquagenics has already done.
Correct. So what this, this item deletes that 25,144 from the aquagenics contract, and then we'll be executing the contract with Sanders for 16 to 60. So we'll have a net reduction of maybe $800.
But this doesn't eliminate the need that if we wanted to go out as residents to, to the pond and go to Buckingham with them, we could still do those.
Help yourself. And we encourage that.
Okay. Ms. Fineberg, question?
She has to.
Mr. Banks, any questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
She can't. You might want to tell her that she has to unmute herself. Because I can't.
Did I need to hear something?
I was telling Chris to tell Margaret to unmute, because I don't, I can't unmute her.
Oh, unmute.
She's still, is she talking?
No, I sent her a, sent her a text. She's been texting back.
There I go.
There we go.
Thank you.
I didn't realize that had happened. Sorry, everyone.
And I'll bring Kenny up for that. And that's a, some insert valves. And it's a sordid story.
Kenny Hall, Kenny Hall Utility Manager, this agenda item, we are budgeted for the 2020 Enterprise Fund for valve replacements. We are going to do two insert valves on gateway, in Gateway, in the Gateway Greens community. We currently have three fire hydrants that are in need of repair, one that is completely out of service. South Carolina's driving this. At the current time, I cannot shut down these water mains without probably, I'm estimating, knocking out probably half the water service to the community in its entirety. These are 30 year old, 35 year old valves that were not properly exercised, were maintained throughout the years, and you know, on the work. These insert valves will be done with no loss of service. So once we get the valves in place, we'll be, we'll start doing a series of shutdowns and going in, shutting the water down. We will replace three fire hydrants right off the bat as an emergency operation. Then we will shut them down again, schedule it all, of course. And then we will start replacing valves along Gateway Greens, in the Gateway Greens community through a series of phases. We're going to phase through one, then go move up into the older section of the community and do it again. This is going to be quite a process, but this, what's really driving this immediacy for this one is these fire hydrants from South Carolina once repaired. And we cannot shut down these water mains, especially the 16, 16 inch water main that runs down Gateway Greens Boulevard. We have operated valves, and they will not, we cannot achieve a shutdown, meaning we would have to go out into Gateway Greens, or go out into Gateway Boulevard, onto the main line, and start shutting down there until we can achieve a shutdown. So we're going to get these insert valves put in, and then we'll start phasing in a series of shutdowns.
Mr. Frank, would you wish to make this motion?
Would God do it? He's, he's right. It's a mess. Nothing's been done for 30 years. These valves don't work. My question is, is that we going out and done alternative bids from other companies on this, and this is the best price?
And, and also, the time you'll be able to do it in a much quicker pace because of these fire hydrants. That's what's driving.
People ask me, what were the holes out there for? And I've been trying to explain this to them. They don't understand that when you do what we call a hot tap, in other words, as he said, we're not shutting it down, it's going to be done there on site. This will allow us to isolate the number of people that are shut off, 200, 300, as opposed to.
Yeah, and we're looking at probably closer to 400, 500. I mean, we're going to shut down for Santa Lucia, we're going to shut down for Santa Lucia. Yeah, we're going to shut down from Santa Lucia to Hampton Green. And all of Championship Drive will be shut down, which includes five different communities there. Once we get it shut down, we'll, we're going to change the isolation valves on the hydrants and then be able to turn the water back on while we do the repairs. So that's, that's mainly two hours.
Are there other, I didn't hear that. Are there other isolation valves that while we're shut down to do the.
Yes, that's going to be.
Do at the same time?
That we would need multiple contractors, I mean, multiple upwards of four, four contractors.
Kill the birds. One time.
It would be, it would be multiple contractors with multiple crews. We looked at that, and we would probably need four different contractors, two crews to get in and do it.
Reason we couldn't do it was scheduling and timing.
You wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Berg, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Ms. Banks, do you have any questions?
I do not.
All favor say aye.
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 Again, Kenny, before you go, there was two things I would like you to expand on a little bit. As one, when you looked at the plans, what they stated was in the ground, and then when you dug them up, what did you find?
Yeah, the, the plans stated that there were sixteen-inch PVC lines. We dug it out, we dug it out. It was sixteen-inch ducts. And that's a little bit different, and irrigation lines are a little bit different than what the state.
Remember, down at the tennis court, what we ran into, same deal, as built, what did Danny say years ago, as found?
And, and that becomes a problem because you don't want to get a quote from a contractor to go out there and he brings the valve for a PVC line, and you get up and it's stuck to iron. And I was also gonna ask you one other thing, when you're talking about sweeping into a community, what exactly is your crew doing to let the board know?
When we sweep into a community, we, we are basically going out into a utility system and basically going over every single piece of equipment that we have. We're identifying what's out there, verifying what's out there versus what's on our maps, our GIS system of verifying that. We've invested a lot in equipment and in our staff. So basically, we're going out there to find things wrong and try to correct them and make sure that what, what is out there is, is maintained properly. And that includes pretty much everything. We'll start at the sanitary sewer. We lift every sanitary sewer and every lid, visually look in there. We're on cameras through the lines, we're slow testing with a dot, seeing how long the flow is taking to go through our system. We're exercising all the valves, digging up all the valves. We're going over all the sanitary sewer cleanouts, any valves that are in there, water, irrigation, sewer force mains, if they're in the community, which in Gateway Greens, there's a lot of them, going over them, exercising if they don't work, we identify, we'll put it onto the log, and then we'll target it for something like this where we can get in there and actually do the repairs. All the fire hydrants, whether they need painting, whether they're leaking, or what have you. We just basically, and then we go over every single meter box, and we bring everything to grade. It's, it's, it takes, for a smaller community, three to five days, for a larger community like a Stony Brook or Gateway Greens, it's gonna take us upwards of a month. But we go over every single piece of equipment that we have out in the field, try to identify what's there versus what's, what we think is there and identify it for repairs. So that's basically in a nutshell, we are, and we've invested, see, we've invested a lot in the equipment, and we intend to use it.
We're about halfway through twenty twenty. How are we on both our operation maintenance, repair budget, and our capital budget relative to our utilities?
For the four hundred fund, we're about right on target. We've gone over on a few because of the way we, we cut up the money as far as the water distribution fund and sewer district, sewer collection and irrigation fund. We, we're in past, it was just one lump sum. Now we've chopped it into three parts, and so we can isolate where that money is being sent. On the irrigation side, this year, we budgeted, I believe, thirty thousand dollars, and we are right there at that thirty thousand dollar mark. The capital fund is moving along as best we can. Some of the people, the contractor that we had to do nine is falling behind. So we're probably a month behind on that, but everything else is, won't be long.
Mr. Tinko, on that too, that, you know, during the rat class rate case, we put in fifteen percent R and R off the top. And I was just talking to Kenny, and you know, last year, we came in and we took a quarter million dollars out of that fund to keep the work going. And I told him that I intended to do the same thing this year because I'm not, we're not gonna slow down the work being done, the weight on the budget here. And that's what that fifteen percent was for. And it's a couple of communities that we found in, resident called and they didn't like because the valve pad was up, you know, the mowers, and it was really an aesthetic thing. So when they went in there and did that sweep, they cut those pads back down the grade. Wasn't affecting the operations, but the people didn't like the aesthetics, but we took care of it at that time. Kenny, excuse me.
And we also, we had to give them, we like to give the residents a heads up, at least three to four days ahead of time. And when our, our, our staff is out there, a lot of times, if there's a problem with the resident, they can walk right out there, easily identify, they can walk out and convey that there's problems in the meter box, or something like where a meter box is sticking up and it's a trip hazard and stuff like that. So we try, we try our best to let them know we're coming, so it gives us a lot of information ahead of time, so.
Thank you. Are you ready to proceed?
We'll be back, and that has to do with a couple of change orders we have on the lakes under construction, ninety-one and one oh one. And you'll, you'll excuse me, I, that was my mistake. I have some corrected versions here, but I haven't.
Something didn't look right on this.
I haven't crisscrossed with his next item when it asks for the action requested. That one says change orders ninety-one and one oh one. So we'll just leave this one to, which the recommended action was the Enviro Waste Services Group, and on the next item, you'll see where it's flip flops.
We'll go.
Yeah, so that, so we'll, we'll do this one as the action requested, which is the Enviro Waste Services Group, and to talk about what's going on out there right now.
This is K, that we're talking about that.
Yes, sir.
Enviro waste came this weekend, started in Callaway Greens, and also they finished today over on hole number seven with a structure leaking. Mr. Tinko, I gave him some pictures if you would like to see them. Basically, what happened is, is on one wall, the structure, which is a manhole, the developer put in a metal wall, who knows why, but it is rusted out, and water's been heating in the structure from the outside, which is groundwater, which is not good because it was causing sinkholes next to the structure, which is in somebody's backyard. Because when Matt Tire went to clean that manhole about a year ago, he caused a sinkhole. So when he was cleaning it, we identified it, we found it. I brought, I used this company for the city of Fort Myers that real good. They're going from Miami to Maryland. They come and they inspected it, they cleaned them all, got them, pressed them. Today, they just finished, I got the pictures, and welcome to share them. What we started with, now we have a new wall. We basically went into that, fixed the leaks at the bottom of it, plugged them up. It's pretty cool, it's like they call horsehair. And I got some stuff that you put on it, and just instantly dries and spans, like foam. And once they did that, they went in there with a concrete sprayer, sprayed the whole entire manhole, smoothed it all down with a trowel. Then they put it on the metal wall and basically created another wall with that. So now you have about a half inch thick concrete wall, so our old wall is pretty much out of the way, so we won't have any more leak in that manhole. We have Callaway Greens have come back next week, as you were yesterday with the lightning and thunder, it's been a nightmare all this week. So we would get about four or five hours in, then they get ran off. So they have to come back, and one of their plugs failed, so they've come back with a new plug next week and plug it back. So we're gonna finish Callaway, and ultimately, we'll hit Summer Gate to finish it up. So we have three more manholes left, and one forty-eight inch RCP needs to be one section, which will be done, is there's a sinkhole in between two properties. That was on the original inspections when we found it.
This F is not a change order, this is work that we have previously authorized.
Correct.
This is just an update.
Just an update type of deal, let you know what's, they're in a process doing it now. The change order, which he's referring to, is Lakes ninety-one, one oh one, and one oh three. When I first got here, I received the, from Matt Tire, when he's on Lake ninety-one, which is right over here by the soccer. On this west side facing Gateway Boulevard, rock was eight foot short of the bank. And the engineering control point was here, rock never went all the way to the bottom. Asked me, what do you want to do, I said, you can't leave that way, you got rock all the way down the bottom lake, like the rusting. So that change order came in at thirty-eight thousand dollars because they were short three hundred something linear feet of rock. The next two, one oh one, and one oh three come to the fact on our lake banks, we have a thing called other, which is rock littorals and all that. And nobody put down who was gonna do it, or what was going on, the black silt, if you seen it out there prior to the plantings being done. Well, according to our staff, which is myself, Ellen, Dr. Chris, it was best to put down number four stone loosely on it, it won't plant through them. Those were never brought attention on the original bids.
Which, which one is this that we've got on screen?
One oh one. That is, that's ninety-one over here.
You see, that's not one oh one.
That was the one, ninety-one's the one with short the eight feet. That one is one oh one, I want to say.
One oh one and one oh three have littoral requirements for the VO.
Correct. But the thing was never addressed, they put my other on there. But by other means, okay, you have to have other companies come in and plant the littorals, plant the trees, especially Flavia's Lake, it's a major one over there, so almost a hundred something trees. But they didn't specify what were you gonna put down on that, either sod, rock, shell, something has to go down to hold that or it ain't gonna, it's gonna wash out.
We talked about that years ago, that the problem that creates is that we've gotta bring in, as I recall, we gotta bring in a landscape contractor, and then who's subcontract through prime. That's chicken or the egg, yeah. How you gonna do that? Because some of these primes don't want any part of that because they just don't understand.
Well, currently, we're one oh one, and one oh three, the staff recommends, do the change orders, let Mr. Matt Tire go ahead and put number four stone down on those littoral areas, then we can plant through them, he'll put it loosely so.
Thinner lake.
The thinner number four stone. You'll see it around the upper part of the lakes. Over on Flavia's Lake, it's probably too late to bring in more rocks, so we're gonna suggest sod for the areas. But next week, they're coming to plant all their trees and littorals on that lake, and we want to see how much is gonna be left to finish for the sod.
I understand sod from the control elevation. Four feet going down, literally sod.
You're gonna have to unless you want to bring one more rock.
That comes with irrigation.
We talked about.
So.
This is what I want to make sure everybody understands.
Littorals.
Don't handle erosion unless you can get them in at full overnight. Not this best, how can you transition?
This is why we need a lake on standard, so we know what we're doing on each lake and they could sit and throw out, because now the gentleman is already pulled out of there, and you have areas that's either gonna require more rock.
And you get that rock in now, you can be going between every yard.
No, you would go right back to what you did before. And the gentleman, gentleman was nice enough after I spoke to him, because he was not a happy camper, the gentleman who let us use access between his homes, the way they left his yard. So I told him the last thing I will fix will be his yard on the way out when we're done. So we still have access through there if we wished to bring in rock. But once again, that change order I have not seen because we haven't decided what we want to put there. Now, next week, after all the plants go in, littorals go in, I have a feeling you're probably gonna be at least four foot down from the control point toward the lake with areas that you have to do something with, or that black felt will not last.
I know, it's got a short life to begin with.
So that's why, the change order so far on three lakes, we're averaging right around thirty-one thousand dollars a change order. And that's excluding eighty-three, because I was not saying, I have not made her mind up yet. So I have a feeling.
And how many, I've walked, I don't remember, how many linear feet littoral sections we have, like eight, eight or nine, at probably twenty, thirty, forty feet?
We have eleven sections.
Eleven. How many feet each? Fifty?
It varies, but hers is the largest one.
Four times how much is going in, on the littoral.
So your plants, the streams, that was where you got a landscaper come in, but what's gonna be is, like you say, the top, three or four, five feet coming down from control point down, what are you gonna do with all that? Because like Flavia brings up, irrigation's not gonna hit it.
I know, that was my other concern. You put those littorals and then you put a top, they're not good anymore?
Well, littorals won't be my concern as bad as the sod above that, because when rains come up, your littorals will get the water with all the rain, and the lake will come up.
If they chase those heads, they should be able to rotate enough to get down to at least the control elevation, because that's what they had the responsibility to do before.
Correct.
The owners had that. Our problem is with that elevation, on down that next four feet, where you've got that black material exposed, that you're gonna put a hole every one foot.
That's what, correct, because Flavia brought to my attention, so Flavia, I understand, but I have to bring this to board before I can change all the heads up.
My regard.
And it's like seventy-five hundred dollars for the irrigation head or something for those.
What I thought was that, and, and I asked if you would be willing to, you know, with an actual discount, and I said you would. And.
Sure, but before we decide, we need to figure out what we're gonna put down first, whether sod or more rock or shell. It, because.
I saw that. What about that? What about Katina?
I know Brad, extreme diver, showed me a lake he did, and he put like shells in the pond, yes. That, that's another option.
Bob, I think he did that over, well, when we stopped at the sod, I'm where Mark, all irrigation was working, that's why. We had it set at the high water bar, going back up, and we could easily broadcast into this.
Brad, I thought maybe you went with this, I remember, we went over to Colonial, and very similar situation, and he was using Katina on that filter fabric as a, basically a filler area, and just get it bringing in that.
When we did some of that, when we used coconut mesh.
It's actually, when he lowered the structure, he would show me pictures, and let me show you something I did with shell. It's a good idea, because it's a lot easier to bring in, yeah.
Lot easier to work with with fight littorals.
That's true.
But when you're in low water, it's horrible, it's like, no matter what you. That's right. Can we, can we limit our discussion to the item on the agenda?
Yeah.
We're getting away, so, well, what we're getting, go back to the agenda. The same issue applies only not to the extent of eighty-three. How are we gonna do ninety-one or, I'm sorry, ninety-one and one oh one?
Ninety-one is done. We ran rock all the way down the bottom, because we couldn't leave it eight feet.
You could get to that.
Correct.
One oh one, one oh three.
One oh one, we can, and one oh three, we can't. I suggest we move as quick as possible because stone is being placed around one oh three, so they can go ahead and do it while they're there. If we wait and they leave, then all of a sudden, your expense will go up because he's gotta bring in more equipment back in. And as far as Flavia's, that's, I suggest you wait till everything gets planted next week, then you'll see how much you're talking around the whole entire lake, then decide what we.
Littorals.
Littorals and the plants and trees.
Super sonic and clear, do you have a question?
Yes, Matt.
And I think Tyler's gonna have to come up and answer this one.
Okay.
Okay, now you can stay there. I'm looking at the question of, when this went out to bid, okay, I'm looking at an error in the bidding, because there's a question here, short, and then you're feet, didn't they know how many feet they had here? So I'm just questioning, is there an error when they did the bidding?
In, in error, what?
When they went to bid and they figured out how much needed, okay? Now they're saying they need more.
Okay.
Did they bid wrong?
No, the, the two change orders are, there's areas on the plan that were reserved for future littoral plantings. Instead of putting plants there now, Gateway is adding the black fabric and rock there now. That's the change order. So they didn't bid to add that. That was not included in their original bid.
So the rock was not included?
Not in the green, future littoral areas, no.
Okay. And we're gonna put the rock there now instead of littorals for, in addition to.
But my concern is, is plant the littorals and then put the stone back after the fact.
You put the stone down first loosely, not as thick as you normally would. Yeah, you plant littoral.
Okay, you're, okay, that's what I would, yeah, put the stone down first, then with the littorals.
But your question regarding the eight feet short over here on Lake ninety-one, you would have to answer that one. I was not here when that lake was designed.
What is the eight feet short?
Because you rock on the west side never went all the way down. Remember, Chris brought us out and say we're eight feet shy going down to the lakebank? And that lake, we had to add three hundred something linear feet of rock?
No, that's not what change orders were. The change order was, add three hundred and fifty-three linear feet in the section shown on the plan as by others to met tower scope of work. Work includes filling, supplying, installing black NWG textile cover number four stone, and deletes one yard grain. It's not for any eight feet, it's adding two green areas.
But you had to pay extra for that extra eight feet?
Thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
No, 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 that's wrong.
Okay.
So just, so you go back to the pictures?
Which one?
Uh, ninety-one. That one. No, I walk up here and wait. These two areas of the lake. On the design plans were, there were green areas, meaning they were reserved for future littoral plantings. Gateway has asked the contractor to fill and put rock in those two areas.
That's not what I was talking about. They're in between two lines where we were short of rock. You, if you went.
The change order specifically says add three hundred and fifty-three linear foot section that is shown on the plan as by others.
Compared to here, that was short eight feet down the wall.
No, no, you're talking about two different things, you're getting confused. That area, the contractor shot the elevation wrong, and they went back and added rock. That's not what the change order is. The change order is the two ends as by others.
But we had to pay for the rock that they didn't, uh, include. Is this correct?
Correct. You're paying for the additional area that you're adding rock to. So it's not part of their original bid.
And they're, they're addressing that now. We've had some discussions about the future area. And now we're just putting together some lists of littoral plantings and looking at the next set of lakes and adding whatever we decide or the, the fix, whether we put rock in there, material, or have the contractor plant at that time and make, make it all done at one time.
But I'm concerned about that extra eight feet that we've had to pay for.
No, no, you did not pay for that.
You did not.
That's not part of this change order.
That was an add on each end, same as the other lakes where they're putting the light rock down and the black material to stabilize it and then put the littorals in.
This, this is gonna haunt us on every one of these lakes. We gotta have a real discussion because the cost of this littoral on the, on the, on the, we have the discussion. It's just running the cost to oblivion. And I'm telling you, we get, now this people. I'd much rather spend the money on aeration and didn't partner around with those littorals and problem it creates. The timing is impossible. If they would grow overnight, that they could then be effective for erosion control, that'd be great. Fact is, it doesn't happen.
Well, hey, we're getting, we're getting far off our fields on from this.
We're gonna be spinning block now. That's the problem.
We have a request to approve change orders to land now, lakes ninety-one and one-on-one. Correct?
Correct.
Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
I have a vote. You guys accept?
I'll second.
Just time for a second. Thank you. There are any further questions? I don't know.
I think the way that they understand, it's not, we've got apples and oranges here. The thirty-eight thousand is not for air caused by the contractor on an elevation day. We're not paying for that. We're paying for extra work that we offer. That's the difference.
Correct.
I just wanna make sure that. I'm sorry.
Please.
That when they did, they did the right amount, because they didn't bid the right amount. That's why we have this change order.
No, 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 that's not correct. Gateway has asked them to do additional work that was not included as part of the bid. That additional work is what this change order is for.
Are you ready to vote? All favor.
Hi.
All right. Vote. Five fewer motions, Terry. Thank you very much. Now, are we gonna go back to E B?
Um, we took, we took care of it. He was, uh, originally that was the Enviro Services Group.
No, that was the Enviro Services.
And that, that, um. It kind of makes sense. I think that was previously approved, that expenditure for Enviro Services Group.
Yeah, that was just an update. In that case, Brian, that's just an update.
They're proceeding.
Then let's go to. Do you have anything before we go to budget review?
No, I do not.
Any board members have anything to discuss with the, uh, district manager? Uh, I'd like to know, did you get the letter sent to the county about? Roundabout?
Yes, we did. And the only feedback I've gotten was from a couple staffers that were preparing, um, to have a letter with their board members about the letter. And otherwise, I have not heard a thing. Yes.
Okay, do you have anything else to discuss in general with the district manager before we go to budget?
I feel about the supervisor's comments.
Oh, yeah. Okay, Mr. District Manager, please.
Well, just a, just a, um, a brief overview, when we, uh, rolled out the initial budget, we had several five-year plans with significant improvements in the street lights for one of them. Repair items for the stormwater system, um, the road system. And, uh, our initial budget was, uh, about a two-point-nine million dollar increase. We went, we went through that and reduced about two-point-six million of that. Now, the seat, we have, oh, it's Russ. Um, we reduced that by about two-point-six million. Um, trying to hold the line. We moved a few budget items around, um, where we originally had in the budget a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for, um, littoral maintenance per the D O. Um, we moved that and included it in a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the existing lake maintenance contract. We took the hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the thing, the existing budget for the bathymetric study and went it into stormwater drain and repair. So what we tried to do was hold the line on the amount of budget for the spending last year. And what we resulted, um, in was budget increases of about nine to eleven percent across the board, or about six dollars a month over last year. And, um, that was a reflection of those increases in those prior work areas where we added money for paving. We added money for repairing the sidewalks and the trails. And some items that we think if we don't make some expenditures, um, we'll have some real exposure to, with, uh, people possibly getting hurt or bicycle wrecks on the sidewalks, um, roadway repair. Nice items. Um, the staffing part of that, which was always a big chunk, um, stayed consistent across the board. Uh, we didn't have any new positions. We looked at, um, recommended bringing our utility intern into one of the full-time positions that was open, the police department. We have a business case we put together for that, but one of the main reasons is the investment we've made in the G I S and the information handling and some of the increased information that we have on the utilities. And we really need that technical help. The majority of our utility staff, um, I'll use the term, they're behind the shovel a lot. They're out in the field doing hard work in bad weather. But some of this information handling and mapping and clearing out the map rooms and digitizing and having that, uh, available, including additions to our data and some of the data demands we have. We think that's a good idea to move him, um, into a full-time position. He's got his master's degree and, uh, very capable young man, and, uh, we think he could be very helpful to us. And that, on the same time, we're, we're recognizing, um, budgetary impacts from COVID. You don't know what's gonna happen, but we're trying to prepare for the worst. That's just one of the discussions with staff about, uh, raises, maybe, but maybe not, probably not. We, you know, the three percent in there, it'd be very difficult. And maybe that we end up doing some flipping on salary. No, sir, it's in there right now, but whether we implement it, uh, we'll see if it's left in there. There's some of the areas that make the cost savings in our insurance this year with the, uh, we got the new pricing that was decreased by seven thousand dollars. And we're going through the budget now, like the chemical sampling, the phagogenics. It's a moves on the contract and saved eight thousand dollars. So right now, our, our recommendation, um, and again, we have, have these increases, um, showing you, you know, five, eleven percent, about six dollars a month, um, for each of the households. And, uh, that's where we're looking at setting at the high mark. And in July, we could look at some of those small cost savings or more areas where if the board wants to continue to hold the line at last year's level, we'll reduce that, um, budget further.
Are you ready to stand for questions from the board?
Certainly.
Yes. May I have Mr. Upfroh first? Did you go? I just wanna ask about your Pelican, um, budget. Are you satisfied with what you've put in here? Are there any corrections you needed?
No, it's, it's the same budget we've had the last three years.
Okay.
We're operating at it.
Okay. Um, I do have questions on the Stoney Brook budget. I talked to Joe McCoka. Uh, this is not the budget that he submitted, um, from your advisory. And I don't know, I see Mr. Davis, I could know if he wanted to address that. Okay. We, we, I had talked to him and I asked him a couple of questions. Um, one of them was, he had ten thousand dollars. I know it went down though. Five thousand for decorative signs, follows, and I guess those are all done. And there was no reason for that to be in the budget.
There's still some sign poles out there that need to be replaced of the decorative type that we're talking about, with stop signs and follows.
Right. He said the ones that, that they have them all done. I took, when I talked to him.
He said that I've.
Yeah.
We've got two different views in, because I see one right in my mind right now that needs to be replaced.
Right. And maybe it's in this year's budget that he's gonna replace it, but he said it's.
It's idle.
He said they're, they're gonna be done, so they don't need to be in next year's budget. Okay. So I just, I could, I adjusted, cause it was ten thousand, and now it's five thousand. But I wanted to, just to make sure. And I guess he is going to address it at his meeting on Wednesday again. All right? So that was another, that was a question. The other thing is, I know you've cut down the budget and I really do appreciate it, but it's still a double-digit increase. And I don't think the residents, um, can handle a double-digit increase at this time due to the fact of what's going on and due to the fact that my biology, um, might change too. So I'm a little bit concerned and I just, that's my concern.
Does time bird give the questions? It's, 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 I think, does time bird give questions for the manager on the budget?
I did, and, and I'm just gonna piggyback on, uh, Mrs. Flaherty, cause the, the concern that I had was the payroll and salaries that it would, it increased significantly over last year in the oh-oh-four budget. And it were not even projected to use what was budgeted last year. Did you come to a conclusion as to why that got increased from the forty-five hundred that the committee, put in the budget to the ninety-five hundred? Chris?
The, um, only item that I saw that was different, looking at the last three years, is Stoney Brook. For several years, they've had between six and four percent of the public works manager and the environmental services manager salary in that category. And, uh, in this past year, what they did is they added five percent of the salary allocation to the administrative assistant and staff assistant in the office. And that was related to the Stoney Brook Committee, um, expenses with the staffing and the notes and the agenda. So I'd have to take a, a closer look at that allocation, um, to see if it accurately reflects that. I know the projected amount was way lower than that budgeted amount, but they were assuming that they would be absorbing that, uh, five percent on those two positions. And that was due to the advisory committee. And we can.
Okay. It seems like a, a big increase over and above last year. And they're not even predicted in the twenty-twenty projected to use what was budgeted. And then that budgeted amount got increased. So I think there's some, I think it got increased and it shouldn't have. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll review that and we can, uh, make any recommendations for the final budget on the, next week on the eleventh.
Okay.
Actions.
There was something else.
Yeah, I have, uh, you want to?
I wanted to clarify my response. Oh, I was speaking as Pons, and the Pons budget's the same. Speaking more broadly for Pelican, we're still okay with the budget. There's one significant increase of ninety-five thousand dollars, but that's coming off of our homeowners association dues. So it's a net war shoe, or residents, they're not gonna pay with the lefty and they're paying with the righty. And all the others we've accounted for. So, yeah, we're comfortable with it, but.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Banks, do you have questions for the managers on the budget?
No, not at this time, Bill. Thank you.
Yeah, and I wanted to mention too, I know there was some talk about, uh, recreation facilities and maybe adding some additional facilities for the residents up at the, uh, at the pool. And, uh, we originally put about three hundred thousand dollars in there, which was, uh, as soon as we got from a contractor. We put in, uh, two basketball courts, two sock, I mean, two tennis courts and also two pickleball courts. And we pulled that out of the budget, but there is two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in our impact fee. Some balance, so we're willing to move forward with doing some additional recreation facilities up there. There is money in that account.
We still have one of the volleyball courts over here.
Yes, sir. No, they're, they're, uh, they're actually getting used quite a bit.
Mr. Bishop, would you like to ask questions?
Yes, a couple things. Uh, first, I wanna make sure that everybody understands that this script that's on the table on this version three is under our current methodology. It doesn't have anything to do with the assessment methodology changes whatsoever. This is as if we. This is the way to go. Uh, I noticed that I didn't understand it from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one, the per E A U debt service, it, it's minor number, but it's, it's a number.
Can you give me that up on page?
I believe in page one. Uh, the return methodology, uh, it used to be your seventy-nine dollars and some change, and it's gone to eighty-one fifty-eight. And I was understanding that with the amount that we had borrowed, we had set up, according to Steve, and we had set up enough that we did not have to change the principal interest repayment schedule. I didn't understand why we increased that. I believe it was approved last year of seventy-nine seventeen, and now it's at eighty-one fifty-eight.
Are you, are you on this page?
Page one of version three. He's got it on the screen. People wanna talk about, I don't know. Page one on my, right? Yeah, I think you gotta move it. Let's take that.
Right here. They went from the seventy-nine last year to the eighty-one fifty-eight.
And we didn't have any reason to do that either.
I think they, uh, because of the slaps around the lakes. And I could ask, um, Stephen Blum to comment. Stephen, are you there?
Uh, yes, I am. Um, on page one, two, three of the, uh, of this package, I kind of anticipated that we would have to have this discussion. I included every loan, um, that we now have, uh, for the state revolving. Each, each one of them, if you go down to the bottom there. And, and you can see right there between, uh, twenty and twenty-one, right on the amortization schedule there. When you look at, it's one, two, three, fourth column, it says annual debt service due. You can see from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one, there is a slight adjustment because of the loans. And then when you go towards the bottom of, of that same page, I have listed out every one of them.
So, so Steve, what you're saying then is because of the scheduling, the, the methodology on the scheduling, it's just a fluke that it went up to the four eighty, can you pan down, Chris?
That's, that's correct. That's correct. Um, and as, and just kind of as a reminder, um, I'm sorry. Uh, so, so basically, it just says a reminder how this will work is, even though you're gonna be doing projects either the remainder of this year or early next year, anything that you, um, any loans that get approved between now and then, you still will get that year of construction. So this is kind of what you're gonna have set. But yeah, every time you add another loan, a year later is when, uh, it'll start to show up on this schedule. Um, now, I guess the, the good thing is you can see from the very first loan there, it's not the largest loan, but one of the loans will be, um, maturing in June of twenty-twenty-two. But the rest of those, you know, those next four there, you can see that those are gonna be on there till, you know, two of them till two thousand thirty-eight and two of them till two thousand forty.
Okay, Chris, pan, pan that up to go to twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-one. So what you're saying is. So what you're saying is that we're, last year, the 79 was based on 386,000 debt service. We're at 480 this year and then 488 the next year. Then it drops back down to 466 on the assumption that we don't have any further to borrow.
That's correct, but again, I can only tell you, you know, all the loans that have been approved as of right now. The, the state revolving loan department does, has a very good website that lists every loan that Gateway approves, you know, once it gets designed. So I can, you know, I update this every time we get another one approved. But this schedule will, you know, as long as construction is being done and more loans are being approved, this amortization schedule will continue to change. So I can't promise that it's going to look the same next year.
That's why is that. And we got 554 last year, I was correctly going to per EAU on a O and M, we're 6674 this year, under the old system. Relating to the actual cost, because I want to just make sure that I understand, for 2021, we are not projecting the use or the expenditure of any money for the dredging of the roadway. Nothing is in there for that.
Correct. I am, I'm working on a couple of alternate funding sources so that we can accomplish that work because we think it's critical that, in front of that is that continued work on repairing the storm drains and storm drain cleaning. And so we're anticipating additional costs for pond maintenance according to the new pond standards that are adopted. So we addressed that budget also.
The, the only thing that I else had was just for, Bob and I talked earlier, is that on the O2 account, and I just have a dot that needs involved in the Pelican turf, but Phil Meesian sent me a breakdown of the cost of that, 1,520,000 on page 12. HOA agreement fees. I don't know if anybody else had that, same misunderstanding that I had, but there are administrative and there are road-related costs that unlike in O1, they're separately itemized. In this one, it's just love. We, we might want an asterisk on that for transparency to show everybody that this is what that dollar value is. But I'm, I'm taking that they're, they're, the Pelican people are advertising that, for lack of a better term, at their own meetings where they discuss that budget. Other than that, I have no other questions.
Thank you. Manager, first of all, I'm complimenting for being able to go down to a more reasonable number. But I'd like to, after what Mrs. Flaherty said, we have residents, maybe more than just a few, that are going, they're suffering and we just don't know how much yet. And if we can keep this increase, I'm going to just say arbitrarily under 10%, I'd be a lot happier.
Yes, sir. And our recommendation is a moment to be to accept this budget as the high watermark. And during July, we will have discussions at both the meetings so that by the final implementation, that we can reduce it further and still take care of some of the needs we have out there. My, my position, I think, is to preserve housing values and to maintain the infrastructure. And there's some things working and looking good and maintain housing values. I think we can accomplish it, both of those, and reduce the budget further in July.
The, the board, the recommendation on this, I was, we're directly directed, doesn't say anything about the top is a high water. We're not going to do that today.
No, we'll be doing that next week. And, and basically it'll be, be setting the public hearing.
Anything further about the budget? Okay. Let's go on and we, only a few minutes before our public hearing. If you can get our, when you're reading the steps, item five, consent agenda items. The minutes of May 7th and the master report for April. May I have a motion for approval? Motion for approval. I have a second. Any questions or complaints? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Five, zero, motions here. Thank you very much. Supervisor comments?
Flaherty? I asked for the schedule of contracts that they handed to be put into a book.
We had it in the last book when the public.
That's it.
Do you have anything?
Nothing for me right now.
Any supervisor comments?
I have none.
All right. Hearing Doug.
I have one, I just have a clarification about the workshop. I just got an email from Jim, so he won't be able to make it on the 18th. So if it's, and then I just spoke with you too. So if we can get the workshop on July 2nd and the next available date for a public hearing.
It's fine with me.
So, so we could workshop on July 2nd and then we could do the public hearing on July 16th?
Yes.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. All right. With that, I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned at 4:50 PM. But don't go very far. We have a public hearing to start around 5:00. Thank you.
Nice. Mr. Hootson's joined us. Jeff Koontz has joined us.
I'm going to head mute the line.
Second motion, open the public hearing.
Are we sure for exact concession or? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for staying with us. We are about ready to open the continued meeting, the public hearing to discuss the operation and maintenance assessment methodology, which continued from May 21st. I have a motion in a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Five, zero. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Chairman, I think for the record, if I may, just for a moment, that the same few board members that were physically present are present for this public hearing. Mr. Yon, Mr. Flaherty, Mr. Pinkel and Mrs. Steinberg and Mr. Van Der Kooch are present remotely. Any user? And if I could just briefly read the caption of the meeting book for the. At this meeting and hearing, the board will consider approving a substantial revision and amendment. At this meeting and hearing, the board will consider approving a substantial revision and amendment to the current and historic operations and maintenance special assessment methodology. It will consider approving the temporary pointy operations and maintenance methodology report prepared by Real Estate Econometrics, Inc., parentheses, the twenty twenty assessment. If adopted, the twenty twenty assessment report will be utilized by the board in adopting the district's FY twenty twenty slash twenty twenty one in the loving and opposing of operations and maintenance special assessments on land within the boundaries of the district. The four reports in summary have been available on request to the district at gatewaydistrict.org or by calling two three nine five six one thirteen thirteen. And I believe, Mr. Shoemaker, for the record, you can say you have made the assessment report available to those requested. They have emailed it to various property owners and homeowners associations. You've mailed it to commercial property owners and made it available to anybody who requested it and have posted it on the district website.
Yes, the all segments of the report, including the engineer's report, the initial presentation that was made, was emailed to all the HOA property managers and made available and posted on our website. And we have received nine comments that we have a record of on the methodology assessment from residents.
And you have them available today, those nine comments?
Yes.
You'll be prepared to read those into the record or provide those to the board members?
Yes, some of them are lengthy and some of them had a bunch of other comments besides just the assessment methodology. So we do have a record of those and the people that sent them there.
I would suggest that you read, you know, it might be lengthy. It's going to be read in summary form. If the people are not here, present either virtually or physically, I would suggest that we read the data to those that are not here. And it'll be made available to all the board members before they take action for this, so they can review. One other item, I thought I had prepared a resolution for the board was inclined to adopt this assessment methodology. I didn't see it in the back. I'll check my emails to see where it is and send it to Vicki. Vicki will volunteer to bring them out for you. Hopefully. May I continue? Yes, I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
No, I apologize.
And if no, it didn't get it before, we provided a copy to Chris. It has been advertised in the Fort Myers news press and a copy of the publication, I think it was May twenty seventh.
When we have posted.
No. Not May twenty seventh, actually, it was in twenty seven. I think May twenty.
Five twenty seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's run day.
Ladies and gentlemen, this public hearing is like is for your benefit as well as ours. And if you have comments, questions, whatever, this is now is the time to let the board know your feelings. Mr. Manager, is there anything further you would like to talk to the board about before we ask for residents to approach the podium?
Yes, sir, we did, like I said, the public comments that we got, we received. Six comments, actually. The other numbers were just repeats or additional items that people presented, and they were really reference to either letters they provided or drainage issues.
But. Do we, do we have residents who have requested to approach the podium and talk to the board this afternoon?
One in person, the first one is Warren Davies.
All right. Well, Mr. Davies is talking to the board. Could Leslie make copies of the statements that you have from residents about this issue so that the board members have them in their hand?
I'm not sure if any of the folks, there's a few online that came in. I see Jeff Kuns is on there, Mr. Francis Amucci has been to the board meetings previously. I'm not sure if you folks would like to make a comment.
And also in addition to residential, were there any?
Is that possible for me to do now?
I just want to, I'll insert, I'll be glad to call on you.
Okay.
There weren't, we got one commercial and that was from the club at Gateway.
Okay, so we did. So where are we?
I was.
Is Leslie going to make this copy?
She's going to make this copy.
Can we have Mr. Davies approach the podium and tell us your good feelings?
Sure, concerning.
Good Dave.
We're sticking with the five minute time limit. It's traditional unless the chair would like to grant you additional time.
Chair, no, I, I basically just have some, some questions and clarification on a couple of things. First of all, mine is Warren Davies. I live in Stony Brook and I'm here representing myself and a few neighbors who had some questions that were wondering. In reading the proposal from Mr. White, where?
Where?
It says the Gateway Services Development District, Baba, is requesting proposals to review the district's existing general fund operations and maintenance assessment methodology and prepare an updated Q and M methodology. My question would probably be more answered by Flair is to what should the board? Okay, my question would be, what problems did he look or find in the current methodology that would have him revise some of the areas? As our cooperation been up for thirty some years, other than prices going up, I think would be the thing. But I'm curious to what changes were actually made. I've read the report. Unfortunately, I don't have a PhD in engineering and I'm just very difficult to understand some of the terminology. So that is one of the questions that I have is what, what were some of the problems that they, they found doing that?
Well, and Warren, just to add on that, I think to your question, if, if you don't mind me adding on to it, it would be, what is the original methodology based on? That's question one. And then two, what, what issues or improvements or whatever will we try to accomplish with the new methodology?
I agree with those questions, but. Nice, yes.
Thank you. For the record, Russ Wire with Real Estate Econometrics, your methodology consultant. With regard to your question, the, the original methodology was developed back in the early, not early, but the late eighties when the district was formed. And it was created based on the existing land, which really didn't have anything on it, which was basically raw land. And they did an example of saying, this is what would happen if we had a little bit of commercial land on it. Here's what we had, if we had some residential on it, and here's what we have with the rest of the blank land. Consequently, it was based on water management. That was the bottom line. The whole thing was based on water management. The past thirty years, your assessment methodology has been based on a water management methodology. Since the, and one of the recommendations I wrote that the engineers did, this should be updated every five years because the development grows, you have new capital improvements that you're adding to it like roadways. You have administrative costs and all of that. So your roadways, your, your administrative costs were all being apportioned to each of the properties based on a water management. So therefore, what happens now is we, and at, at that time, it was fair and equitable, and so it started. But as the development grows and you had the new capital improvements and you had the new costs and those islands really need to be measured based on the benefits received. So roadway would be based on trips. Your water management would be based on flow and your administrative costs and all of those are, are based on an equivalent assessment.
The, one thing I did, I went through the sheets that were sent out that listed all the residences and businesses, et cetera, and the plus and minus going up and down on the different things. Some of them go up drastically, some come down drastically. Going back to, I was just looking at things over five thousand dollars. There was too many of them, so I went, narrowed it down a little bit more. Probably the one question is, some of the businesses, small businesses, have been paying five hundred and fifty four dollars by this sheet. One business is going up almost twenty three thousand dollars with this methodology. Now, on taking from what has just been said, that the five, five fifty four was established maybe back thirty years ago. And of course, why it wasn't increased. But now we have a lot of people with just twenty four thousand, we have twelve, fifteen thousand increases. And I know these people have been aware of this. And I also know there's some people on board that would love to move this along as quickly as possible. But this is, this area, especially for the small businesses that I've been able to take a look at, this is a big crunch at this time of the year, especially with some of them being out of business for three or four months. A lot of things going on that they don't have funds for. So I would caution that we perhaps on some delay this if possible. I know we've been doing it for three years and it seems, that seems to be a, a problem sometimes as we get on something that goes through years. The parking thing we had, how long did that be? RV parking, that went on forever. So we need to, you know, shore it up. But then again, I think the timing for this right now is, is crucial for the small businesses. Of course, the, the big question comes up on the golf courses. And I've got it here. The, I couldn't locate too much on the Pelican Resort, but the Gateway Golf Course is going down over thirty eight thousand dollars a year. Don't understand why, other than what's in the report. And reports is, well, they've taken, first thing they did was took out all the lakes because the lakes are part of the water flow system through Gateway. That's understanding. I would take from that comment, then, that the golf course does not get any benefit from those lakes. All the, other than nice flow of water coming through their golf course, they get no benefit from that. So I can understand that. If they're getting a benefit from it, then perhaps we need to take a look at that and see what the benefit is. He, the gentleman talked about water flow. I don't know where Gateway Golf Club gets irrigation water. I know it takes hundreds and hundreds of thousands of gallons of irrigation water to keep a golf course green and keep it the way it's supposed to be. I don't know where they get their water. But if they were buying it from Gateway at four dollars per thousand gallons, after they go over a hundred and two hundred thousand gallons, then that would be a huge chunk of money to do that. But if they get no recourse, nothing from that water, then I can understand why. But if they're getting irrigation water from it or any other kind of benefits from it, then I think that should also be added into because that raises that property value along that golf course. That raises the property value for those homes around that golf course. That's all part of a thing and still part of water flows if they're using irrigation water or from that. And I don't know if they're paying for irrigation water or if that's what we're taking it out of. I know there was a concern about some pumps or wells that if they had problems with the lakes, they could do that. So I took it from that, that they were taking the water out of the lakes. Because of doing that, I questioned how much more should have been given in, in looking at that and determining how much they were going to cost. And again, my, my last thing is really, at this point, Tom, I know it's been three years since we've been doing this and it's been up and down, it's been talked about, it's around, and all kinds of different things going on. But right now, it's a tough time to do that. And I think maybe some of us in HOAs, they find out how tough come July first, when the payments are due, and we see how many people don't pay their assessment come July first. So I think that would be a good indicator as to how, how much problem we have within our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Warren. Will you stay there for a moment while I ask?
Okay.
Any board members have questions for you about, about what you just said?
Yeah.
Ms. Flair, do you have?
Yeah, Warren, are you aware of or done any analysis of the twenty twenty one budget relative to assessment methodology of what we have right there?
I only, only thing on the budget that I've looked at is that says that that budget currently is based on the current method and it could change if we vote this in. Yes.
Let me help, let me help you. Current budget has one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for water. Three million, seven hundred thousand dollars total. It's thirty five percent of our budget is being based on a methodology currently. One hundred percent of that. That is neither prayer nor. Sixty five percent of our budget has nothing to do with the sound of it. But yet, we're being asked to pay for that. It should have been, as Wes mentioned earlier, this should have been done twenty five years ago and it would not need to be kicked down the road any longer. We've got people out there, and I'm one that's going to be paying more as a residential investor. But what we've been doing in the past is not fair. It's not applicable. I mean, the invitation to show them. So these, so these guys want to make sure that you're aware of that.
I.
The percentages.
I am aware of that and I don't know totally how much is going to go up. I've seen the pluses and minuses come up here, come up there for the residents. But I think we in Gateway, I'm Gateway resident, I love Gateway. You know, I go to the tavern, I go to the brewery, I go to the brunch over here. Anything, business that comes up in Gateway, we support it because we want things to happen in Gateway. And right now, things are going to be slow because once this is done, it's done. But for the people right now that have been paying one fee and now getting jacked up five, six thousand, twenty three thousand dollars, that is going to be a big chunk. And I, I agree, we should have been doing this every five years because you wouldn't have that kind of a jump. And I don't know if we, I know we can't do any adjustment. I think we talked about, they talked about this the last time about doing some waivers or adjustments or whatever. We really can't do anything. But I think it's important to support some of our small businesses because I hate to lose them because we have some good businesses here. And if the money's going to, is not going to be there, they're going to have to raise prices of stuff, people are going to go elsewhere and, and things. So I, I agree with what you're saying, if, if some of that, but again, I, I think we just need to take a look at it. It's been three years. I'd say, why not another year? But then again, I know some board members want to get it, go and get it off the table. And most of the time, that's me. I want to get it off the table because it's been talked about so much. And so, but the board's going to decide what it wants to do and, and things. But I think that we need just to take a look and make sure that we're being fair to some of our small businesses. I don't think a lot are going to get a lot of small business loans and stuff, so.
Please, please stay there. Do you have a question? I want to, I want to ask, Ms. Feinberg, do you have questions for Mr. Davies?
I do not.
Mr. Sane, do you have questions for Mr. Davies?
He's muted. Just, just one quick one, Warren. Just in, in, based on what you, what you reviewed, and let's put timing and approval aside. Do you agree that an updated assessment methodology is needed? And do you have any issue with the current methodology basis?
No, I, I agree with it and I, I agree that it should have been done and we should put it on, put it on the calendar for five years down the road so we don't run into the same kind of problem where we have big chunks of money going up slowly, not easier than taking a big chunk. I, I agree with what they're doing and from what I understood in reading the report, and I say, I, some of the stuff just wasn't me. I should have had Mr. Tinkell sitting next to me while I read it because I'm sure he could have answered most of my questions.
Okay.
And I, I agree with that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Manager, do we have any other residents who want to make the presentation this time?
I don't have any speaker cards and also mentioned that we set up extra seating in the back in case we had a crowd and being any social distancing and sounding harder back there.
How many are back there?
Nobody. But better to be safe and sorry, we didn't want anyone pounding on the door saying, let me in.
Glad we weren't out of the way.
And also, I just add for the record, if only did the initial hearing announcement information, we included a copy of that in every utility bill, residential and commercial that went out to our customers in Gateway. But as far as folks to speak, we have a few people online and I'm not sure if they'd like to. Mr. Yanucci, do you have a comment? Or would you like to speak to the board about the assessment methodology?
What I have is that if it's permissible, I'm the president of the Daniels Preserve HOA and we compiled the feelings of our residents into a statement. I don't know if it's permissible to read that in this type of venue. If it is, I would do that. I have emailed it to all the board members, so you have a copy of it. So it's not exactly in the form of a question, but again, it was difficult. We have 215 single-family homes. We had a lot of people that had a lot of feelings on this and I condensed it into about two paragraphs.
Yes, sir. See, reading the record, I think the board would be interested in the comments from the residents of Daniels.
Okay, well, then here it comes. Says, "On behalf of the Daniels Preserve HOA, I'm expressing our opposition to the proposed increase to the assessment of single-family homes in Gateway. While you refer to a lengthy study by Real Estate Econometrics, we disagree with the assumptions upon which the study relied. Daniels Preserve is a small community of 215 single-family homes. Approximately 30% of these homes are only occupied for six months a year. Another 30% of these homes are occupied by retired couples. Trying to force fit these homes into a model that is based on households that have a much higher number of occupants that use the roads at a much higher rate is incorrect and highly flawed. The model that somehow shows that multifamily dwellings contribute less to the overall use of roads is simply not true and is based on the guesswork of a flawed model. We believe the same goes for the runoff estimates that are assumed by this study and then applied across the board instead of individually. We disagree that our tiny quarter acre lots have a more negative effect on water management than golf courses and country clubs. We in Daniels Preserve have been negatively affected by the recent 60% increase in irrigation rates, which in our opinion were drastic and unreasonable. This was indicative of the CDD board that was asleep at the wheel only to suddenly find themselves in such a deep hole that required such an enormous increase, an increase that should have been spread out over several years. We've asked for help in our opposition to the roundabouts. We were told you could not help us. We asked for help in our opposition to the apartments to be constructed on Gateway and Griffin. We were told you could not help us. We have endured annual tax increases, although many of our residents are retired and on fixed incomes. We have endured the constant overbuilding, which seems to have no end in sight. When we moved to Gateway, it was promised to be the model of future communities with wide open spaces and strictly controlled growth. Obviously, that is no longer the case as we are continually squeezed by constant development. You were elected to be our voices, our protectors and our leaders. To bring this new assessment methodology upon us at a time like this, during a pandemic that has decimated jobs, families and an entire country, is a sad commentary on all of the CDD board members and your priorities. We ask you to please reconsider this terrible decision until such a time when both the country and communities have healed." That's it. That's the, that's the collective voices of the people in Daniels Preserve. I really don't want to put my own stamp on this because it would be unfair to the people who I promised that I would simply read that into the record. Although I would say that I do understand that the old model is probably outdated and something new needed to be done. I just think the timing is, is something that should be considered.
Sir, we appreciate that letter and the participation of the residents of Daniels.
Thank you.
Jim Wazinski, Jim, do you want to make a comment? I've distributed your.
Yeah, just, just very briefly, as you know, I commented at the last meeting and then I put my comments in writing for this one because it was kind of difficult with some of the problems of connectivity last time. I did send to Chris and all, all the board members, four page, four pages of comments. As you know, that did a lot of this kind of stuff for a living for a long time. And I dove deep into the, the model, look at the assumptions and whatnot that's in there, which, you know, how the results came out. And, you know, I just came out, I'm not going to recite everything I did. I just wanted to be here to answer any questions. I think everyone on the board had read my, my comments on this. I think there's flaws in the model, in the assumptions, especially some of the assumptions. And while I think the old method was not good and needs to be replaced for something more robust and more fair, as I said in one of my comments here, when I look at this and I evaluate this new report, I got to wonder if the new method is more reliable than the current method or if it's just different and unreliable in a different way. So again, I'm not going to go through all of the details of everything that I pointed out here that I think are flawed in the model. But I am here to answer any questions that anyone on the board may have for me.
It's my intention that we don't have any more requests. I want to make a presentation for the board to close this public hearing and then to ask for the representative of Real Estate Econometrics to make a presentation. And then for the voice members, we discuss them on that show, how they wish to proceed. If that is agreeable, it is data, it is certain, given the high sun. What I would suggest is that after Mr. Warren makes his presentation, that it should be quite an opportunity for those who spoke, prior comments to respond to any presentation aspects of Mr. Warren's presentation. Then reopen the public hearing, keep the public hearing open until after Mr. Warren makes his presentation, after any further comments by members of the audience either here or remotely. I think it's a good idea, so. Ref, would you come to the podium and make a brief press? One record board hearing is now back open.
Oh, okay, but he didn't.
Make sure.
Sorry, sir, I apologize.
Thank you. That's what we did, check signals before there's no.
Board members, I really didn't come prepared to make a presentation today. We've done presentation after presentation. But I do want to let you know that, to me, the, the old methodology is old. It does need to be.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
How's that, is that better?
That's much better.
There you go, sorry about that. And, and the new methodology to me is fair and equitable by the way that we did the measuring. If, you know, you have roadway costs, if somebody is driving more on it, for instance, a commercial piece that is driving more on it, they're putting more wear and tear on the road than somebody who's driving a little bit less. The using of the IT rates, the Institute of Traffic Engineers, is a tried and true and fair and equitable measurement. It's used, I do a lot of studies for governments and I do a lot of studies also for developers who are going through the entitlement process. And they have traffic studies that need to be done. And the traffic studies utilize the IT rates and the governments accept those to understand loads on, on roads and all of that measurement. So it is a tried and true and I've used it in almost all of the methodologies that I do. Plus, I manage three districts and in our methodologies, I did the same process. Same way with the, the water management side, I did the, it was a good way of measuring it. If there, there are other measurements you can use. If you wanted to use the coefficient of flow, I did it using the blank land and using 100%. And there's another calculation we didn't. But if you look at those same tables and it has structures on it, the percent goes, you're 60%, not 20%. So if I took 100% of the house out and the 20% of the, of the land just used the coefficient off of those tables like we've been using, it would be upwards of 60%. So, because that takes into consideration all of the flows and, and flows of the pervious and impervious surfaces. And then as far as the administrative side, that to me was fair and equitable also because everybody has the same opportunity and benefit of the administrative cost to the district. So with that, we've been working on it for three years. I know every piece of land in this, in Gateway, within the district, both Pelican Preserve and here. I looked at them all, I measured them all and that work product is then, you have three years worth of work that it has taken to do that, so.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to give the residents another whack of you. Mr. Warren can address the comments that he made today by anybody who called in, President Yanucci or Mr. Davies, if there are any new objections that they raised. And I think you saw Mr. Wazinski's long email and Ross, whether you feel you're ethical, you addressed all the comments. I think that's important, I think the benefit from having us trying aggressively, things appropriate. Any new ideas that may have come up since the last iteration?
If, if, is that okay? If, I did take a look at Mr. Wazinski's letter and I do understand some of the concerns and what he would consider flaws, but if some of the things that he is recommending, I would consider being flawed. If you look at one of the greatest examples, well, in terms of the traffic, I mean, that's one of them. Measured a lot of different ways, but the IT has been the tried and true. Used it everywhere, I've seen other methodologies use it that way. The only other way to measure something like that would be like a front foot of a lot against a road. And that's, and all your roads in here are private behind the gates, so that wouldn't be a true measurement of your utilization of the road. As far as water management is concerned, I understand people were saying that on the impervious and the pervious surfaces, the impervious being the house and that water flows onto the, the pervious surfaces and then flows into the ground. Well, when that 20% flow means that the ground is saturated and it flows, 20% of that water flows in the land. You throw more water on top of it, that changes that 20%. So I've done some calculations and I took a look at those. And if you wanted to take a look at the empty land and just use the flow factor and consider all pervious, the factor becomes 50 to 60. And so it really comes back to the same situation because they take that into consideration when they do those flows. With regard to, to any other comments, it's, again, it's just fair and equitable. The old methodology really needs to be changed. The other thing that I'm going to recommend is that every year we take a look at the methodology and adjust it accordingly. If we have a new parcel that, for instance, that becomes flat, then all of a sudden you've added more units to it. So we need to make that adjustment to, to the methodology. And also, that would be an opportunity if we see that some of the inputs have changed. You know, if, if IT changes, for whatever reason, we would have that opportunity to do it that time. This is the most fair and equitable and, fair and equitable way of doing it and it's defensible. That's the bottom line. I mean, that had been defensible for me and everywhere I've used it and every other methodology consultant has seemed to be used it the same way, so.
Ross, now in your current, in your assumptions and the water management calculations that you're utilizing?
Yes, sir.
Did you, did the insurance report address the applicability of using a coefficient that you used?
Yes, he did. He said that that was a very reasonable and applicable percentage to use. And also, so you understand, I use IT there, the Institute of Traffic Engineers. The water management actually came from the Lee County property. When I get all of their data, I get the Lee County data, it has the gross, what they call the gross area, which is the gross billable area, it has the gross acres of each parcel. And that's how that got measured. So that came from Lee County Property Precision, which is a very reliable data source also. And that's all the comments I have on the comments that I saw.
Okay. Now, after hearing that, do any of the residents want to make, Colonel, maybe you want to make another comment?
It's just, one thing that has always happened. Before the record, you, Warren Davis. Yes, I'm sorry, Warren Davis. The proposal went out in September of 2017. Projects lose emphasis from a lot of people over time. Three years seems to be an excessive amount of time in my book, in my thinking. Could you have done anything different to have presented this in 2018, the first part of 2019? I, I looked at all the stuff, all the research, but then there's books like the IT, all those things that you can gather. But is there anything that you feel you could have done to bring it to a closure sooner than three years? Roughly, almost three years?
Almost three years. And, and I agree with that. There, there were some factors of, of timing. Every time we were getting ready to do something, we were adding to it. I mean, there were some other assignments that were put into it, like taking a look at the commercial parcels up around Pelican Preserve. Then we would make a measurement there and then another parcel would get added. So there was a lot of research that went into it. And then when I'd make the presentation, we'd go and add a little bit more to it. So it did, you know, it's not an easy thing to do, particularly a project this size. Some of them I could get done relatively quickly, but I'm not dealing with a total of 9,000 parcels on top of that. And I measured each and every one of the commercial parcels by hand with the measure to make sure, because they didn't have the knowledge that we needed in the property. There, so it's very, very accurate, what I have to do. So it says, taking the detailed time to make sure that it's accurate and defensible, that's why it took a little bit of time. And having all the coefficients as we were going along.
The board should have handled that together a little bit.
Well, it's not necessarily the board and not, you didn't know what we were doing. And the defense of the board is defense of the district. This is a monster project.
Yes, okay.
It is a monster project. And I've had a couple of them like this and they're taking that time. Because you really need to put time to make sure that you're accurate with the measurements, so.
Can I get anyone else? Now, Mr. Attorney. No more public comments, anybody else?
I could ask. May I have a motion to close the public?
All right. It was Wazinski. Sorry, can I get in the com, I couldn't, Bill, you were breaking up and I really couldn't hear what you said.
Oh, we're, we're getting ready to close the public hearing, at which time the board members then will ask questions of their consultant and make comments. And then hopefully, we will have a motion on this resolution and decide how to proceed.
I'm sorry, I do have a couple of quick comments just in response. You know, you're talking about the runoff coefficient, the 20%, which came from the Tetra Tech study, but if you go back and see what Tetra Tech did and go back to their source, their source material from the NRCS, all they did was take an average of all of the curves that were in the rational. And so it takes into account all kinds of different things, like more runoff, less runoff, different types of goal and all that. So saying that their coefficient would be higher than 20% is because it's running off a lanai or a roof. That may have already been taken into account with, with what they did. They just took a big, an average of probably 50 different items and just said, that's about right. And I think that's the right thing to do. And I'm not questioning that at all. I think that's the right thing to do, but it takes into account a lot of what you're talking about already. So I would, I would certainly, you know, look at that. And again, saying that all of the real property improvement constitutes impervious surfaces on a lot, lanai, a pool, you know, a roof that just rains drops off. In, in the methodology, this is what's causing all of the really of big gyrations from house to house and community. communities. 100% of these gyrations is the residents. And I think there's probably a better way to do it, which I suggested in my comments. And the other thing with, with the traffic, the IT, that's the one item I've asked for in my records request, I still have not received, the what's behind that number, the assumptions that went behind that number, and just plucking it off of a, you know, a table on the i dot website, to be, is not sufficient. It needs to be explained, especially in a place like Gateway, and the gentleman from Daniels Preserve explained as well, that it just isn't, isn't reliable when applied to Gateway. And again, in my comments, I suggested a way maybe to smooth that over, again, up to the board for your consideration. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Tyler Wainwright from Tetra Tech has approached the podium, apparently wants to make a comment about your comments. Tyler?
Hey, good afternoon. So this is Tyler Wainwright with Tetra Tech. I just want to provide some, I guess, clarity on this runoff coefficient that's being used in this. So the runoff coefficients, let me first explain, I guess, what they are. So there's a method to calculate stormwater runoff, and it's called the rational method. That's basically the simplest version of a calculation that anyone can use to determine how much water runs off their property during a rainstorm. So the rational method uses coefficients for different things. So in real life, when you really do stormwater modeling, there's hundreds and hundreds of different coefficients. There's a coefficient for paper driveways, there's a coefficient for concrete driveways, there's a coefficient for clay roofs, there's a coefficient for asphalt roofs, for Zoys grass, St. Augustine grass, and there's, it's simply not practical to apply that to every single lot in Gateway without going through years and years of field surveys and analysis. This is not going to happen. So what I have seen in basically every one of these methodologies that has used runoff coefficients is they always use a composite factor, and the composite factor is usually defined as either pervious or impervious. Now, the comment in the letter that I've read said that he didn't feel that it was appropriate to use 100% of pervious for the structures, because the structure is discharged onto pervious areas, which would then somehow capture that runoff. So just to clarify here, that's, that's incorrect. So here's what happens in a rainstorm. Rain falls on the entire lot. It falls on the structure, it falls on the grass. The grass has a coefficient of 20%, meaning somewhere around 20% of that water hitting the grass is going to run off, and somewhere around 80% is going to get sucked off, sucked up into the grass, it's going to infiltrate into the groundwater. So what you're saying is that grass is already being watered to refusal. Water is already running off of that grass. At the very same time, the water coming from the structure is also being applied to that grass or to the lake or to the street. The grass cannot take any more runoff. All of that runoff from that pervious area, all the rainfall from that pervious area, is going to runoff. The fact that it travels over pervious surfaces in between really makes no difference, because the pervious services, surfaces have already been calculated with their runoff coefficient. So what you can do, a different version of this, is if you don't want to define individually pervious versus impervious, there are an even simpler versions where you can take a composite ratio of the type of lot. You can take a composite ratio for single-family lots, you can take a composite ratio for multi-family lots, and you supply it blanketly by area. So for example, in your permit criteria manual, you actually do that. So in your permit criteria manual, you actually define single-family to dashed as 40% impervious completely. There are different factors that you can use to do that, but the idea that water hitting a pervious surface and then traveling over a pervious surface that's already being watered to refusal is somehow going to decrease the runoff is not correct. So I don't agree with the comment that was made in that portion of the letter. So I just wanted to clarify that, and hopefully that makes sense.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I may, just one comment also. I know Mr. Wozniewski mentioned that he didn't make a public records request for a copy of the IT manual. That's not a public record. The fact that a consultant has a manual that's used live, it's kind of like in my law books in my office, they're not public records. The IT manual is published by the International Transportation Engineers, Institute of Traffic Engineers, and they updated it appropriate, and it's not an inexpensive item to obtain. So that document is not a public record. And what they have are codes assigned to various land uses and the trip generations assigned to land uses based upon studies that the International Institute of Transportation Engineers have done those studies. That correct?
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify. All right, now, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to close this public hearing.
Can I motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you, Professor Flaherty, may I have a second? We have a second. On favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye. Aye. Close, your public hearing is closed. Now, the board members are going to have the opportunity for five minutes to make statements and even ask questions of their consultants. But I've got a clock here, and I'm going to keep it, and I want you folks to try and help me out here with keeping this to a reasonable amount of time, and I'm going to ask Professor Flaherty if she will begin.
Okay, yeah, I have, all right. Several residents have approached me, so I'm going to ask you the questions so that you can answer, and will be public. The Institute of Traffic Engineering, when was it last updated?
Last date that I had was the ninth edition was what I had, that was last date. I have not seen a more current one. If there is one, I don't have it.
Okay, that was their question, when it was last updated, because they were wondering if a person, they have four cars versus one car with the trip generation would be the same.
Yeah, well, what, what we need to get, and you need to take a look at, is the methodology by they do that. So all that gets taken into their studies. The number of cars that are at houses, they, they put all of that, and that's where that trip number comes from.
And the other question was because the trip generation included banks, and since many people use banks online, they were wondering why if that wasn't more updated with rest trips to banks.
Well, we could, we could actually update a lot of stuff with this COVID now, when you think about it. I'm getting, I'm getting four weeks to the calendar.
All right, now I have another question, and I know this is going to be a little strange, but somebody approached me and said, why are we subsidizing, subsidizing the Gateway golf course? So I want you to explain.
It's, it's not a subsidy, it's not subsidizing Gateway Golf Course. The, it's the true benefit that the golf club is getting, well, first of all, it's, I measured every parcel in here, and that parcel is the impact that every parcel has on roadways, on water management, and on administration. Well, on the, the golf course, the reason that it came down was because of the water management side of it, because they were being assessed for acres that were underwater, and that's already has water in it, so you're not, you know, it's not really benefiting that, the golf course from that point of view. That is, you're, you're assessing the district waterway at that point, because that's a flowway, that's an integrated system that runs from one end of the property to the other. So consequently, they're not being subsidized, it's just the way the benefits came out and the way the impacts came out.
One more, can I?
Do you just say one more? Oh, yes.
Okay, I have one more. And I was requested, so I'm going to the board to request that this be tabled, because it's September after everything is finished. And that was my, that was a close question.
Is that a motion to pay?
Well, it was a request, so I guess I could make a motion to table it.
I'll make it a motion.
Can we get through our, our comments before we start making motions, so we can all have a chance to speak?
I'm sorry, Ms. Banks, would you say that again, please?
I, I was just, and it was, it's hard to, hard to hear 100% what Kathleen's saying, but can we just make sure we hold motions until we've all had a chance to speak?
I think that would be, would you hold that motion, please?
Thank you.
Are you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay, Mr. Banks, I'm sure that you have something to say, will you please start your five minutes?
Yes, thank you very much. So the first thing that I have is, and this is kind of a checklist for, for us all as supervisors, one, I think the question that we need to answer, and more importantly, have a position on, is do we all agree, or do we as individual supervisors agree that the assessment methodology needs to be updated? So that's, that's the first question, one, for the individual supervisor, and then, two, also as a collective group. The second question is, if we, one, agree that the, the existing assessment methodology is outdated, difficult to defend, and an updated methodology is required, the second question is, do we agree that the proposed methodology is based on what I'd say reasonable and accurate information? So is the methodology that's being presented, do we feel that it's accurate? If we answer no to that, then I think we need to be able to specifically say, what areas do we not agree with? And just be able to articulate that. And then the third piece for me is, one, if we all agree the methodology needs to be updated, two, if we agree that Russ and his proposal is accurate and reasonable, and there's, there's no dissent around that methodology, the third would be, do we agree that, that we can, we can approve the methodology at this current time? Now, to me, what I've heard is more around the timing component. I think, I haven't heard anyone disagree with the need for an assessment methodology. I've heard very little dissent around the, the methodology that's being proposed is not reasonable and accurate. There might be some questions on specifics within the methodology, but again, if Russ is the expert, he's using industry standards to create the methodology, I'm sure we could spend another six months going through and trying to customize this methodology to fit certain things, but I just don't think that is reasonable. So I'm making the assumption that, my personal opinion is, we need, we need to update the existing methodology. Two, I think the proposed methodology is accurate and reasonable. Three, it comes down to timing. That's where I think a lot of the conversation is going to come. And with the timing, it's really around the impact that it's going to have to the residents, whether you're a winner or, or a loser, and I hate to use those terms, but whether you've been positively impacted or negatively impacted, maybe that's a better way to state it. That might have some, may have, there may be some issues on the timing because of the existing environment, and any increase, I think, at this time, needs careful consideration. The other issue around timing is, have the residents had the opportunity to be educated, informed, and have the opportunity to, to really consume this information? So we've been talking about this methodology for about three years now, probably extensively over the last year and probably year and a half. Even if the full methodology wasn't fully complete, I think we've had a lot of conversation around. Since we have set this, this hearing and continued it, I think there's been opportunities for residents to come forward, pose questions, opposition, and I think we've heard maybe from 10 or 20 people, and probably most of that, that 10 people that have been vocal are probably the same 10 that attend regular board meetings. So, so I think we, I think we've given the residents a good amount of time. Now, there's always opportunities to, to, you know, do more, and this is a big issue, and, and I, I really don't like terminology being thrown around that we're trying to force this through, because I don't think that's the case. We're not pushing anything down anybody's throats or whatever. It's an issue that needs to be addressed. We're pushing it forward just like with any, anything that comes across our, our board floor. I do think there are some other things that we have done, where we've taken a little bit more time or had the opportunity to do more town halls and that type of thing. And just with COVID and everything else, it's, it's kind of limited our, our ability. But, so what I want to close with is, one, again, I want, when our supervisors speak today, I want to make sure it's very clear that, that they articulate whether they agree that the existing methodology needs to be updated. They either agree or disagree that the existing methodology is reasonable and accurate, and if they don't agree with that, I'd really love to hear specifics on why. And the third is around the timing. Why can we not approve this today? And the one recommendation that I would have is, I am very sensitive of the increases that it may cause. So I think in, in our conversation, what I would love to determine, if we can say yes to one, yes to two, I would love to be able to pass this assessment methodology today with some consideration. Either, one, we delay it, the actual implementation until next year, or, two, we do a phased approach where, let's just say hypothetically, we say that.
I have time, dude.
Yeah, I just, I just need 20 seconds. If we do, if we can pass it, either we, I think we should pass it and we need to table it, you know, or potentially postpone implementation until next year, or pass it and do a 50% rollout, and that would be 50% in both directions. So no one would have an increase greater than 50%, and no one would receive a benefit greater than 50%, or, or something along those lines. We can play with the percentages, but I do think there's a way for us to pass this today and also do it with an implementation plan that has a minimal, or at least a less, impact than a full rollout. So thanks for the additional time, Bill, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. This is Feinberg, would you like to start your five minutes?
Yes, please. I guess, first question I'd have is, it's intriguing to think about a percentage rollout, like 50% this year and 50% next year. Is that even something we can consider, or would that be impossible to do?
And Russ can speak to the methodology, but in my opinion, you have to completely revise the methodology and have to be a brand new methodology, because you have a certain approach that's in view within this methodology, that you would say, we're going to have a methodology that, as to, let's just say, as to roads, we're going to do one EAU per road, per unit, come out of our water. That may be your approach, and then the rest from water management do the pervious and impervious approach. But that would be a rewrite of the report. Russ, is that a fair statement?
That is.
Can you get up to the mic and say, I don't mean to stretch, but that's just my sense.
And, but I think what, what Mr. Banks was talking.
Is that correct?
That is correct, that is correct. We would have to revise the methodology, however, what I think, what, what Mr. Banks was, was referring to was the fact that you have all of these, you have the single family is one assessment, you have the multi-family is another, and if you were to reduce it by 50% of one and 50% of the other, I don't think it's going to equal out to the same amount on the budget. That's why I would have to take a recalculation of the methodology to do that, because.
Okay.
There's so many single family and so many multi-family units that you're doing that, that from, that I think it, it wouldn't offset each other, even the same way with the commercial, it just wouldn't offset. That's, that's part of the issue, because it's not like it is today, where you have one that's set up for the, the residential units, and then you have each one of the commercial units have their own assessment of the moment.
You're usually, Mr. Feinberg, it's not.
No.
And I appreciate that. So basically, I'm getting, I'm getting the answer that, no, you couldn't phase it in.
Is it all or nothing, right? Is that what we're hearing, Margaret? Either implement it or you don't.
Correct, that's, and that's what I wanted to clarify, because what you said was intriguing to me. I guess my next question is for Stephen, and, you know, when we were looking at the budget earlier, we're looking at an amount that assessments would go up for, for individual residential properties. And it's about $62 to $65, depending upon which, which chart you're looking at. And in the assessment methodology, it's like $67. Does that mean that if we implement this assessment methodology, that the assessments for single-family homes are going to double, or would one replace the other?
Yeah, no, I, I think the, the quick answer to that is, is that until we take the current, what I'm, we're calling version three, and plug it into Russ's model, you know, there's no real way of knowing for sure. As soon as, you know, the board, you know, provides some guidance after today, you know, we can work with Russ and get that out. you know, we can work with Russ and get that out. Because it's just a matter of taking the current versions and the subtotals from the departments and plugging it into his model. But right now, as, you know, right this second, I don't think it's, you know, feasible to be able to say that.
Okay, so that was my question. I am, I yield my time.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Mr. Tickle, are you ready to begin your five minutes?
So, Russ, I've got a question for you. You're not the only firm that does this kind of work.
That's correct.
Any of the firms that are using a road-based methodology or a private methodology, are there any other managers that you're aware of that have stood the test of, let's say, a judicial review or a challenge in the authentication of the document itself?
I am not aware of any.
I don't have to say this to be politically correct. I understand what people are saying. We've kicked this can, and this can has been kicked down the road three years. It's been kicked down the road 25 years. A mistake was made by not challenging this, but we got away from a stormwater management-based deal to what we are now at Gateway. But the thing, two things, I'm going to say fail to impress me on the presentations, maybe. One, we're talking about something that impacts 9,000 units. 9,000 units. We've heard from none. None. In Pelican Preserve, we have 3,000 units. We've heard from none. None. I would have thought that if this was such a widespread issue, neither here nor the stadium up at Tampa would hold all the people who would be complaining. Nine people. That's it. That's it. I understand what each and every one of them are saying. And I think the gentleman from Dana's Preserve made some interesting points. The problem is, is that I believe that from at least an engineering point of view, and I think Tyler said, well, we have to be in a position that if we're challenged and we've laid before the public the documentation to challenge ourselves, we've handed it to a lot of clout. We've known it all along that this is not very reasonable. Good example, the people at the country club. A lot of people don't like that, but it is, it's real. There's a country club there. It's got 500 members. Their long assessment amounts to $100 a member a year. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. I just think that this, we haven't heard the outcry that I was expecting that we would have if it was that type of a issue that caused a lot of people to buy. Nine people out of 9,000 is not very impressive. Not impressive at all, as far as a negative situation. I think, Russ, I think you've done an admirable job. I do agree with what Stephen said, the numbers are going to change because the facts and the ratios of 19, 2019 to 2020 that you used your numbers on are totally different than what they are in 2021. The stormwater management has almost done a flip flop. The administration has jumped almost a half a million dollars. And that is the one item in the assessment methodology that Russ has come up with, that the equivalency factor is one. Everybody is equal to one on that. So there's 42% of our entire budget where everybody is being on a level plane. So I think the system is very fair, it's very equitable. And when we would hire Russ for another one of his competitors, I think we would have been seeing a very, very similar.
Well, the buck stops here. I'd like to start by saying that I think it is in our best interest to review the assessment. But there are some real gremlins in the assessment of results and methodology that I ensure it can be a lot of heart work. And the first one is the golf course dropping down by such a huge amount. And churches in Gateway going, their assessment going up by such a large amount. And some of the commercial properties in Gateway going up by such a large amount. Now, that's not to say that that's not what the numbers lead you to. But to go from where we are to those results in one year, get a year when a lot of these commercial properties are having trouble making a, making go of it, seems to me to be a very bad political move. Secondly, Russ intended that this was a monster process, I believe I said that correctly. And to review or change it every year. I don't want to go through this every year. Now, I, no, I know, I know.
I just want to lay your peers.
I've worked in more than one organization, and I know for a fact that there's more than one way to skin a cat. And that making sure the cat doesn't get killed while you're skinning it is a very important part. Now, I would suggest that we hold this off for a year, another year. We'll agree another year. And let the owners know exactly what this is going to result. And I think that Mr. Tickle may be surprised at how many folks are really upset about it when they see the additional charge for their church or their business. And the thing that Russ has produced is very complex. And once we get into it, there's going to be almost no getting out. So I don't want to, I don't want to get into something that six or 12 months from now, we say, and I certainly wish we hadn't done that or wish we'd spent a little more time discovering that this neighborhood is not commercial, but a residential neighborhood or that the roads in Pelican Preserve are owned by the CDD or a bunch of things that have not all been taken care of at this stage. So at the moment, I am very much in favor of Mrs. Flaherty's motion to table. But it's possible that we can do all of this in another way. So, board members, here what you have to speak. Mrs. Flaherty?
I'd like to table this to September, hopefully after everything seems to be back to normal.
So that would be a motion to table until, which meeting in September?
The second meeting in September.
But here's the thing, what's going to change? What, this is what I don't understand, and I'm not normally, you know, aggressive about certain things. But what is going to be the difference between this year and next year? Well, I know what's going to be, as far as like the impact, the dollars. I know it'll be more painful this year because of COVID than possibly next year. That's assuming that the economy comes back next year. But whether you're a commercial or resident, if your assessment goes up, you're still not going to like it this year or next year, right? And I don't think we're going to have this big epiphany as far as socialization and people, you know, knocking our door down to understand this methodology. What I do agree with is that is the timing right? I mean, I think we have two options. Both of them require us to approve this today. One is approve it today, we pull the Band-Aid off, and we push this thing in motion, and we try to offset this increase through our standard budget process. So we try to make it, you know, more accommodated. Two is we approve it and then we table the implementation until potentially next year. But either way, I think if we don't approve this today, we are sending a very wrong message. If we all agree the methodology is, needs to be updated, we all agree that the methodology is accurate and reasonable. If, three, if the only point of contention is the timing, I still think that doesn't stop us from approving this today. It would be, when are we going to implement? That's where the conversation, whether we implement this year. And we don't even know what that impacts, that impact's going to be until Stephen goes and works the numbers along with this assessment. And we don't know what impact we can have on the budget to reduce it. But, you know, and I'm okay if we have a conversation, look, it's not the right year to implement. But I do think we should seriously not table this vote because there's no benefit to it. There's nothing we're going to know in six months that we don't know right now. It's all about implementation.
Mr. Feinberg, do you have any comments before we, if there's a second to the table?
No, I'm fine.
Mr. Tickle, do you have any comments?
No comment.
I will second the motion to table. Motion to table is a preferential motion, it has to be voted on without further conversation. Mr. Tickle, will you tell us of your vote on the motion to table?
No.
Mr. Banks?
No.
Mrs. Feinberg?
No.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Motion to table fails through two, and so we are back at the resolution 2020? Or some other paper there?
Mr. Chairman, I think we need a motion to approve resolution 2020.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'd like a second for discussion. And I have a... Yeah, so Ed, would you, would you consider amending your motion to approve with the stipulation that we, we have the option to, we would come back and determine when we would implement based on the revision of the budget? So basically, what I'm saying is, we agree to approve. However, the decision on when we would implement, we would do that at the point after Stephen comes back so we know what the impact's going to be to the budget.
So section four calls for adoption of 2021 operation maintenance.
I think...
So you're going to have to amend the resolution.
Bill, I think what Doug is asking to do is to have Russ and Stephen simply stick the version three numbers, which to me are not going to change that much, stick the version three numbers in the model and produce the three sets of numbers that we're looking for, the commercials, the residential, single family, and the multi-family.
And you say it isn't going to change that much, and you are absolutely right.
Yeah.
The churches are still going to pay a lot more, and some of the commercial costs are still going to pay a lot more.
No, it's, no, I think it's worse than that, Bill. The problem is, and I don't know why we did this, I don't think Russ should have been giving the 1919, 2020 number. Those were the rules. We should have given him the 2020. But anyway, that's water over the dam. My review of this thing, and I have looked at it from every perspective, the amounts of money at admin versus the amounts of money that are, that is in roads versus the amounts of money in stormwater, all of which have their own independent way of calculating the percentage, drastically changed from 2019 to 2020. I don't have any problem of revising the motion, Doug, to approve it, pending this coming back and showing us the number. I think the question is, is the time. Russ, what do you and Steve need to essentially de-model with new numbers from version three so as to come back and have, instead of what we saw on the budget a while ago, that we were looking at the version three that is the old method, have a side-by-side look at what it would be under this method?
Not speaking for Stephen, because I know you have the budget. There's, there are opportunities to soften that a little bit. From a management perspective, we can talk about that. But it wouldn't take me very long. All I need is to make sure that I verify version three numbers with Stephen, make sure they're marked up appropriately for collection, and then I plug those three numbers in and the model spits it out.
That's what I thought. I thought that could be done very quick.
It can be done very quick.
And for, just for clarification, the allocation of cost centers by items is proposed to be different in the 2021 budget than it was in the prior fiscal year budget, correct?
Say that again.
The allocation, how you get allocation.
I can tell you they're totally different.
So a whole, totally different budgetary approach.
Now, I'm going to, I must say, add in that what Russ was doing as a one-to-one, for example, was a lot less than it is this year, like 1 billion or 900,000, and it's now 1.5 million. So there's a lot of money moving over to lower this, this cost. And it's going to shuffle this thing a little bit. My thing is that I'm going to go along with what Doug asked, and I would stipulate that we approve the methodology plan with a proviso that the implementation will be based on when we receive the dollar value and see what the impact of this is.
There would have to be next week.
Oh, yeah.
That's where I go. Public hearing, you have to have everything in place.
You got to have it, right? Yep.
And so there, I would do that to basically kick the can down the road till next week.
Next week. But adopt the methodology, prove the methodology first, and then have you to crunch the numbers as to what the actual number is going to look like.
I think it might be appropriate to prove the methodology, almost like an interim, to ascertain the budgetary impact.
In essence, that's what we're doing.
And then next week, if appropriate, the board, whatever the board's comfortable with, approve it finally for the budget.
Yeah, finalize it.
Keep the existing.
Yeah, and the whole purpose behind that is to be able to, again, push it forward, identify if we do have opportunities to implement during this budget year where it has, you know, maybe there's a way we can offset things, I'm not really sure. Or we say, you know what, we need another year to better position this, and we just basically table the implementation until next year. So I think it's a win-win for everyone, and we do push this forward. So I...
I, yeah, I was going there next. Stephen, I just want to make one sure, one thing. The analysis that you did that created the current version three of the budget was based upon actual final numbers of the EAUs. I noticed they changed, so I'm assuming you went through and got that taken care of. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We did check to see if there were any changes to that.
We did check to see if there were any changes to that. We were told no, just some small, you know, different parcels that got split, but not anything new. Those numbers are the numbers as of right now, but as you mentioned, that is a living document, so.
Okay. The only thing I could see that would have changed, and I was waiting for you to say it, you didn't say it, is the apartment complex down here that would go to 220 units versus a lot smaller number when it was not platted. As I understand it, it's still not platted.
Uh, I'd have to check and see which one you're referring to before...
About our famous 220 apartment units. Gateway 2012 LLC.
Northeast corner of Prep and and Gateway.
That's the only thing that has had a major, or could have a major impact on your EAU counts of switching from a non-developed, non-platted to a number which would, in essence, increase the EAUs and lower the rate.
There might be a parcel in Pelican Reserve also, not in Gateway proper, around on the west side of Tree.
Yeah. Yeah.
Question?
Is that you, Margaret?
Yes. So I just want for clarification to know that we are going to have the numbers next Thursday.
Yes.
Yes.
That is the basis of my consenting to the change.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. President, I would suggest, board, if you think that the appropriate action would be to approve the assessment methodology report as you buy seven purposes of calculating the budget for 2021, you can chair a proposed budget for 2021 using the current number. And that, and the final consideration would be at the board meeting next week. So this resolution would not be adopted today, but you can approve it. Would you agree to that, Doug?
Based on what I heard, Ed, if you agree with it, I agree with it.
I agree with it.
You agree, and a second or agrees? All right, let's have a vote. Mr. Tinkelman?
Aye.
Mr. Banks?
Aye.
Mrs. Feinberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Flaherty?
No.
Mr. Guy?
No.
Motion carried, three to. We will be back here talking about this again this week. Mr. Guy, I think what might be also helpful is to continue until next week's regularly scheduled meeting, a consideration of final adoption of the revised assessment methodology. Just so, what are you saying?
I'm saying, continue, hold on until next week.
Continue, I continue, consideration of any final adoption of this sub-motion. I think that, I thought we could, I still think there was a sub-motion, the record is clear on that. What tends to, you want a motion, you always continue to, to next week's meeting?
Any final consideration of adopting the revised assessment methodology, basically validating that we have the numbers.
Okay, will you, will you take that?
I'll take that.
Mr. Banks, will you take it?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Tinkelman, will you vote?
Yes, I will.
Mr. Banks, will you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Feinberg, will you vote?
Yes.
Mrs. Flaherty, will you vote? Mr. Guy votes yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't mean to confuse you.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, it is 6:33. We haven't come to blows yet. So I think it's a good, a good time to adjourn this meeting, and thank you all for your help.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone. Good weekend.
You too.